Mr. Azzi lead us in the pledge. Please rise, put your hand over your heart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Here.
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 George, Azzie, Kachell.
Here.
Public comment cards. Greg Evangelotis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I have two items that I wanted to share with the council. First of all, I live at 1365 Hilltop Road, Reno, and I've lived there for 16 years. I wanted to compliment the city on the reconstruction of the public street adjoining our home. The roadway was about 40 years old and needed repair. Spanish Springs Construction, so I'm an engineering City of Reno staff, were all professional and did an excellent job. I wanted that to be relayed to the City Council. Second, I'm a member of the Greek Orthodox Church on Lakeside. This past weekend, we had the Greek festival on Lakeside in the middle of reconstruction of that roadway. We were concerned about access relative to driveways. I want to express appreciation to RTC, the Contractor CFA, and the City of Reno in particular, Mayor Kachell, who was out there Thursday to observe firsthand the challenges. The flow and circulation went off without a hitch, and I wanted to express the appreciation of myself and the parish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Michael, Michelle Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, or Council Members, and City Manager, thank you for this opportunity to announce our first public or community workshop for the Plum Lane Reconstruction Project. It'll be held Wednesday, August 31st, at St. John's Presbyterian Church from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. During the, it'll basically be an open house format where we'll be continuing on the survey that we sent out in May. We're looking for more public comment and input as far as the enhancements that they might like to see associated with our reconstruction project. And we'll have a brief presentation in the middle of the open house. Other than that, we'll have workstations set up and basically receiving public input and public comment. So, thank you, and I hope if you have the time, you might be able to stop by and check out what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Richie Ray Walker.
Richie Ray Walker, Reno, Nevada. Just a quick update on the screamers. The last time I was down here was a few months ago about the screamers in my neighborhood. These are young punk kids that start screaming about 11 o'clock at night, and they scream till about 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning. There's been about a 70 percent improvement. The Reno Police are doing something about it. I don't know what they're doing, but there is some improvement about those screamers. So, that out of the way, I want to go into the public comment here. The public comment for the day is Obama versus democracy. As you well know, the healthcare law, if you've been following it, is truly unconstitutional. That is not only my opinion, but it's the opinion of 12 federal judges in this country. It is unconstitutional on two grounds. One, it violates the Commerce Clause. Two, it violates the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, freedom of choice. And there are 22 states right now that are suing the U.S. government on the unconstitutional Obamacare healthcare law that was not a bipartisan vote at all. It was strictly a democratic, one-party vote and not a bipartisan vote by Republican and Democrat. Also, too, there's another unconstitutional thing. As you well know, that the President Obama declared war on Libya without consent of Congress. John F. Kennedy did the same thing when he declared war in Vietnam without consent of Congress. Both unconstitutional, there was no congressional consent to go to war in Vietnam or Libya. And the last thing I'd like to comment on is the Dream Act. That is where Congress voted down the Dream Act for their own particular reason. And in all aspects of that Dream Act, which says that it's going to grant 300,000 legal aliens automatic amnesty by fiat, and Obama is going to push this thing when, in fact, the U.S. Congress has already voted down the Dream Act. So what we have here presently in this country is a lot of democracy that isn't democracy. It's, I would say oligarchy, because you have a president that doesn't even support the Constitution of the United States. So that's that, whether the people like it or not. And then we have this election coming up. So I would think that the voters of this country would take a strong look at the U.S. Constitution and ask themselves, does this President of the United States really support the U.S. Constitution? And/or the military? I don't even think he supports the military. I think it's a show and tell and nothing more. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Al Townsend.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my presentation will be very brief. First of all, I want to congratulate-
Could you move the mic over a little bit?
I want to congratulate the board members on their election victories. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces here, because old people, senior citizens, I'll say, enjoy continuity. Now, I want to thank the board again for having put a happy face on a sad situation from last year. The hanging baskets have drawn raves. They're just beautiful. Now, we face another problem where the hanging basket funding is up again, and we need 75 baskets at $250 apiece. I want to be among the first to send in my check for that. I have a, is there a representative from the Reno Gazette-Journal? If not, I'd like to have the board submit this to the, and ask for three, maybe three, possibly four months' little squibs about the hanging baskets for next year, because they want, by September 7th, they want to have people who are going to contribute to pledge their $250 as soon as possible. And September the 7th is the day they'd like to see. If I seem to waver, it's because I forgot to take my salt fix this morning, and Mr. Denis has kindly consented that he would prop me up for three minutes.
[laughing]
So, I think that's all I have to say, is that the City Council has really put a happy face on a sad situation that we had last year, because you deserve it. Congratulations for your input and to see that our city looks like Reno again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You can give it to the Secretary, give it to the Secretary over here, please. Bishop Wynn.
To the Mayor and the Council, it's good to be back.
Good to see you.
Pastor Mark Dawkins with us. On July 16th, 2011, Greater Harvest Church hailed the Second Annual Day of Fun. This was a special event to give back to the community, and we are grateful for those that partnered up with us, which was the Reno Police Department, Reno Housing Authority, International Church Fellowship, New Beginnings Christian Center, Word of Life, Renegade Radio 101.3 FM, Model Dairy, Oral Wheat, Bread Company, HUG High School, Boys and Girls Clubs, Walmart Corporation, Reno Gazette-Journal, Greater Nevada Credit Union, Community Service Agency, People First Foundation, Bounce Around. A host of community partners, parishioners, family, friends, and well-richers came together and served our North community by giving away free hamburgers, hot dogs, clothes, gifts, bread, dairy products to over 500 men, women, and children. There were games and activities, prizes, and much more. We appreciate the opportunity to serve, and we were blessed to have so many wonderful supporters and volunteers who were willing to give of their time and talents to a much-needed event. This is just the beginning of what we will continually do in our great city, and today we want to express our gratitude to some of the Reno Police Department for serving right along with us, as Chief Pitts, Deputy Chief Wine, Detective Mike Guider, and Officer Di, and the members of the SWAT team of the City of Reno for teaming up with Greater Harvest Church and New Beginnings Christian Centers to make this a life-changing event. And we just want to tell you, thank you again, Mayor, for the time.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.[716.82][716.82][applause] Mark McHale.
Can you hear him yell?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I'm here to warn everybody about drinking and driving and getting in the car if they're drunk, and getting in the car if they're drunk driver. 22 years ago, I got in the car with my brother when I were both drunk, and was rolled 150 feet, and the car landed on my head. And I'm here today to warn you people about such a deed. Chief Pitts, do you have the numbers?
It was 12, Mark.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There are 12 arrests for hydroxylates. And that's, that's, that's keepy. That's, well, we could do a lot better, but I believe that's good enough. Well, it's not good enough, but you know what I'm trying to say. And, ah, far out. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
It's a good message, Mark, and we appreciate your delivery, and thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, thank you.[824.62][824.62][applause]
Mr. Sam Denis.
Sam Denis, Encyclopedia Reno Government. Sam is a Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. Sam is the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam has, oh, by the way, I'm Sam. Sam has attended all of the City Council, virtually all of the City Council meetings since 1994, and thus has become the encyclopedia of Reno government. I want to once again welcome Andrew the Abracadabber Man Klinger, our new City Manager. I also want to welcome our new Budget Director, Mr. Chizzle, over there. I have not come up with a nickname for him. I was going to switch over, I was going to switch over and give him the Andy the Magician Greens nickname, but I'm going to watch him for a little while to see how magical he can be. If he digs this Reno just a little bit out of this hole, he will at least get the magician nickname out of that. I mean to here to talk about this, this deconsolidation of the Fire Department that apparently is taking place. I was instrumental, Sam was instrumental in consolidating the Fire Department. Truckee Meadows, which is really Washoe Fire Department, and the Reno Fire Department, they joined together about 10 years ago, thanks in large part to Sam's erudite comments supporting such a maneuver. And now, 10 years later, just because this and that, and one thing went wrong, and here and there, you want to deconsolidate. I don't think you really want to deconsolidate, but Washoe County is behind this scheme to deconsolidate. In other words, split the Reno Fire Department and the Washoe Fire Department apart again. And I'm adamantly against that. It's like trying to get a divorce because of one little spat. I think they ought to have counseling if nothing else. Sam, nice chortle, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Sam is willing to be the divorce counselor for that, and I will hopefully save the marriage. As I close out, I did want to say a few things about the Air Force Academy. The Air Force Academy and UNR are going to be playing each other in football next year. Seems like a silly thing to be talking about grown men throwing balls around and eventually some of them making huge amounts of money, but it's going to be a tough one for me to decide who to root for in that football game, Air Force Academy or my alumni, my alma mater, the Air Force Academy. I'll probably get out and flip a coin on that one. I want to wish the Mayor a happy day. Mr. Mayor, and I, we really got kind of close this morning. People would not even believe it, but in a few weeks, you will believe it, and that's about all I'm going to say about that.
You promised you wouldn't tell anybody.
I did.[1035.83][1035.83][laughter]
All right. Having no other public comment cards, I will now close the public comment section.
Yeah, one for you.
Do you have one more? Well, come on up. You got one over there?
We send consent agenda items.
You want to speak under consent, or you want to speak now?
I'd like to speak now, seeing as I'm here. My name's Blake Frenchman, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Council Members, Mayor, thank you.
Which item?
Members of the community.
Go ahead.
Based upon circumstances that have happened to me, I'm a fairly new diabetic, and that was a challenge of some mayhem in my life that, without this experience and coming forward and talking to the cooperative meeting that was last week between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the social services issues that affect those that are in traumatic need, and how those services are administered by social services, and what they tell people that are in great need. Those actions cost us a lot of money, and by my own experience, I'd be happy and honored to share this experience, so that you can see by how we deal with people and how we take care of them, by doing the right thing and then applying federal guidelines of pre-existing conditions. By merely passing along to another agency, either from the county to the state or back to the city, whoever picks up the tab, the taxes are our taxes, and they trickle down from the state and federal government. By just merely passing them along to another agency of our government, doesn't save us resources that we desperately need. I love this state, man. I grew up here, and I never thought I'd be in this situation where I stand here financially the least among you at this time. I've always had the gift of work, and I want that gift back. And the social constructions that exist have not beat me so down that I don't want to pick myself up and go on, because I have a lot to give. And just by how we treat each other and take care of each other, for those that are in need, will make a huge difference. We have other resources that are available, that we could have a community garden with the resources that are available right now from the state, right across Ninth Streets and Wells, all that land out there. We could provide fresh food on a continual basis to the homeless and those in need. A lot of people that are diabetic can't eat the things that are available at the food banks, because nutritionally, it's not conducive to good health. And unfortunately, we have people in our community that are so beat down by the system that they can't pick themselves up and go on. And the job and the issues between the people that work in social services having to deal with people that are in pain and suffering, that are beat down and can't pick themselves up, is a traumatic, stressful job, and they need help, and they need help. So how we treat each other and how well we take care of each other is a measure of how great our community will become. So that's what I'm asking. You've got my help, just let me help you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, close the public comment section, bring back to the table. Approval of the agenda, before we go to approval of the agenda, staff is requesting these three items be pulled from the agenda, or two items. Item E14, E14, Approval of the Bid Award for Thermal Imager Camera, and item J9, An Amendment Restated Forbearance Agreement Between the City and Duffa Bank Recording the City of Reno, Nevada Taxable Revenue Bond Series 2007. Proclamations, item C1 will be heard. Next, Presentations of the Day, there's a chief, there's a, the chief's commendation that'll be out of ID1. The Consent Agenda, item E1. Staff is requesting this item be heard under J6, the City Manager. Item 13, E13, will be heard under J6, the City Manager, which will address Amendment Number 3 of the Cooperative Agreement. Public Comment, 12 noon. Public Hearings, 12:15, F1 through F5. Resolution, H12. Staff is requesting this item be opened and continued to the August 31 meeting. Public Hearing at 6:00 tonight, there are none. There will be a joint meeting of the Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency this afternoon. Pulled Items, B1. Staff is requesting this item be pulled from the agenda under the Redevelopment Agency, and I'll make that announcement again when we go into the Redevelopment Agency. Any other changes? Mr. Guston.
Mr. Mayor, just as a comment, is there any request for a time certain for J2? I believe there are a lot of people in the audience that probably want to speak on that issue. There has been, is there any time certain requests on that?
No, there hasn't been.
Could I request any one o'clock time certain on that?
On J2, let me pull it here, J2. Yes, we'll do a one o'clock time certain.
Thank you. Move to approve the agenda.
Are there any other changes? Mr. Azzi, you have a change? Okay. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes, Special Session, May 18, and June 1st, June 29th, and the regular meeting of July 6th and July 13th. All right, any corrections? Have a motion, and second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersal. Mr. George, Mr. Kachell. All right.
Clerk advises me that there's one expense for Martin Marietta, which is $225.48. I need to recuse myself on that item, because I do work for Martin Marietta.
Okay. Mr. Guston.
No, sir, there are no expenses related to the baseball, so I do not need to recuse myself. I can vote.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. Have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to proclamation, declaring August 24th, 2011, for Bill Leonizio Day.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Kachell, you've recused yourself, then you've seconded. Do you need to recuse yourself from that one item, though?
Yeah.
No, you can't second that item. So, probably you can vote on that item.
Right. Okay. Chair, entertain a motion for reconsideration.
Move to approve. Yes. Second.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, to reconsider, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Now the motion.
Motion to approve the cash dispersals.
All right. Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, to Bill Leonizio.
Mr. Mayor, this is really an exciting day, and there are several, several people here. I think they should all stand up, so that we can see just what kind of support Bill has brought out from many of the NAB members and people who've just been involved in the neighborhood over time that found, and I'm about getting there, because this isn't the first time that we've had a Leonizio that we've honored here. His son has been honored at least once. He's a member of our Fire Department, and actually not on duty, he was performing some of his heroic acts. So I think it just speaks to the core of the Leonizio family, and we've had such benefit from having him involved in our community. Whereas, Bill Leonizio is a Reno native, has long been an advocate of citizen involvement and volunteerism, dedicating over 35 years of his time and expertise to benefit local organizations. And whereas Bill served as past President of the Nevada State Fair and Executive Committee Member of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, and he continues to serve on the Board of Directors for the Reno Air Races, and most recently, and unfortunately, I would add, retired from the City of Reno's War II Central Neighborhood Advisory Board. And whereas Bill was appointed to the War II Central NAB in March of 2002, and served as Vice Chair and Chair of the NAB from 2005 to '08, and Bill was involved in a number of NAB-sponsored improvement projects, including the Country Club Acres Neighborhood Plan, the Virginia Lake Restoration, and the Linden Grove Revitalization Projects, and annual neighborhood cleanups, always there, along with his wife, too, I need to say, and other kinds of events. And whereas Bill and the War II Central NAB recommended the allocation of community pride grant funds to purchase anti-graffiti cameras and graffiti-removal kits, repair neighborhood park equipment, and provide meals for children through the city's Park Pals Lunch Program. And whereas Bill served as a critical resource to residents' concerns for information related to their neighborhood, development projects, and code enforcement issues. And whereas the City of Reno acknowledges and appreciates Bill Leonizio's faithful and enthusiastic service to the City of Reno and its residents, we therefore do proclaim Wednesday, August 24th, as a day to honor Bill Leonizio, in and for the City of Reno, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate Bill Leonizio for his dedication and service to our community.
I don't want to take any more time of your meeting, but I really appreciate this a lot. I've enjoyed, over the last nine years, working Neighborhood Advisory Board. There's some people here today that I've enjoyed working with, and I think the NABs have done a lot for the City of Reno. They, it's grassroots input, and I know that both the Planning Commission and the City Council listens to what the NABs have to say, and I hope it continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Item D1, Presentation by the Chief.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Manager, and Council. It's a privilege to be here this afternoon to continue to support the Council's practice of recognizing citizens who serve our community. With me today are Mrs. Keller, to my right, Mr. Adams, and Mr. Hannah. On July 13th- On July thirteenth of this year, at approximately 1:41 a.m., defendant Brett Keller arrived at 535 Broadway, number seven, in Reno, which was the residence of Mrs. Keller. She resides there with her son, Mr. Thomas Adams, who's with us. And Brett arrived with a loaded firearm and with the intent to kill Kimberly that morning. After entering the residence, he told Kimberly that he was going to kill her, then kill himself. Brett aimed the firearm at Kimberly and fired, striking her in the face. Thomas heard Brett's comments and the gunshot, and came from his bedroom immediately, attacking Brett in an effort to subdue him, save his life, and his mother's. The two became engulfed in an ensuing struggle over the gun, causing another discharge of the weapon into the floor of the apartment. Meanwhile, Kimberly ran from the apartment with a gunshot wound to the face, seeking further assistance from neighbors or others in the area. Witness Edward Hannah came to their aid and soon saw Thomas and Brett in this physical confrontation. Edward punched Brett several times, causing Brett to give up possession of the firearm, and then he secured the firearm. Another neighbor brought Edward a bat, which he used to strike the suspect, gaining control, and then basically waiting for police arrival. Edward's actions aided in the saving, saving of the life of Thomas and obviously Mrs. Keller. The actions of both Thomas and Edward then resulted in the successful detainment of the offender, who obviously intended to kill Mrs. Keller and her son that morning. Your efforts and actions that morning represent the highest values of service to others before yourself. And God bless you, and thank you for this. And would you please join me in thanking them for their service?
I'd just like to say thank you for everybody that's here today. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the city of Reno and the great state of Nevada, and Reno's finest for their fast response and professional service.
Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to say thank you to my brave son and my brave neighbor. Never thought I'd be, I never thought I would be in this moment thanking you both for saving my life. I will forever be grateful to you, my son. Love does not express how much love I have for you. I'm so proud to call you my son. You are my shine to my son, and you are my hero forever. Thank you, love always, Mom. And thank you Reno Police Department for recognizing my son and my neighbor's actions. I also would like to thank Detective Millsap, David Millsap, for helping me and my family through this. And I also would like to thank Bree, who is my advocate. She's been very helpful through this manner, and thank you once again.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to the consent agenda, item E one. Under the consent agenda, item F one, under their, the La Cruciano Restaurant Approval for Latina, I could never pronounce it, Latina Supplement Application for Alcohol. I want to disclose that that's my son's brother-in-law. I have no investment in it, I don't have anything to do with it, and it's not going to affect how I vote. And I didn't name it properly, so what the? But people know me, they know I don't do that anyway, pronounce them right. Anyway, under the consent agenda, any items pulled for discussion? Mr. Ayazi?
Items B and items H, Mr. Mayor. I have one question for all of them, so.
Okay.
B as in boy?
B as boy, H?
And H?
All right, any others? Mr. Guston?
Yeah, I just have one question, a brief one, on A one and F. I think it's F two through six, that's all. I'm, I'm sorry, take that, uh, let's see. FH two through six. Just hours of operations, all I want to.
Okay.
Okay.
Any others? Yes, Mr. Razzle?
Mr. Mayor, E one D on number one and number five. And then Councilman Guston, you pulled F two under that supplemental application? Okay, F two under supplemental application, and G one supplemental application gaming.
Okay. Any others?
I'll move to approve whatever's left.
I have a, yes, ma'am, what do you need?
Mayor and council members, I'm Beatrice Hamilton. I just wanted to bring your attention to a misspelling.
Ma'am, you'll have to come up to the microphone. And first of all, you need to fill out a form to speak, but come on up, come on up. Come up to the microphone, identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Beatrice Hamilton. I'm owner of JB Mapes and Company. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there is a misspelling of my company. The restaurant is not Maples, but Mapes.
Mapes. Okay.
As in the Mapes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Now I have a motion to approve all other items. And with that change, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ayazi?
What's miscellaneous gaming?
It's a good question.
Michael Chomp, for the record, Business Relations Manager, for the Business License Division. So miscellaneous gaming, is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's E one B, it's all new license gaming, and it also says miscellaneous gaming. For the Jeff Siri?
For the club, those are sport, the miscellaneous category, this is all for sportsbook?
Sportsbooks.
It should be.
And it's new licenses?
Yes, for these four locations.
Didn't they always have sportsbooks there?
Um, I, they may have, but I don't know what the previous operator was.
Okay.
If I may, Alex Willie, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. Yes, sir, you are correct, they did have, and what they have is a new router. A new independent router that's going through and.
So it's just going to Jeff Siri, then? So it's not just change of ownership, it's just?
Change of the router.
Okay, move to approve items B, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ayazi?
Item H, what are they doing at the Paycheck Advance where they need secondhand merchandise? What's?
They're going to start buying and selling gold. So they need a secondhand license to do that.
They're buying and selling gold? How about TV sets?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
How about guns?
But this would allow them to buy and sell anything.
That's right.
I'd like to think.
That's correct, their license is to buy, the, the description on their license is for gold. If they are going to do TVs and other items, they would have to add that onto their license.
I think we need to clarify that.
There's one here? Okay, one of the applicants is here to answer that question.
Hi, this is Claudia Hernandez with Paycheck Advance. It's just gold that we're going to be buying, not selling, but purely gold. And at the Paycheck Advance, we do payday loans.
Yeah, and all I want to make sure is in our code, is I don't think we have something that says just buying gold. If we give you this license, you could buy and sell anything. I know, I know what you want to do now, but in the future, you could still do more, I think.
We need, we need to clarify this before this goes into.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, how is this different than a pawn license?
Yeah.
And do they have to, and do they have to meet all this? How is it different than a pawn license? And do they have to, when they're buying gold, do they have to do all the things that we require the pawn shops to do as far as identifying the seller?
Craig Scott from the Reno City Attorney's Office. I'm, I'm trying to think here, is a secondhand license, there are state requirements for getting this, but I'm not sure exactly what this person's going to be doing. It may be that you want to pull this one for a two-week period so that we can clarify this.
Well, and you said that they want to buy gold, but that's, how is that different than a pawn license?
If they're licensed as a secondhand dealer, they can do that. A pawn license has a restriction in terms of number of locations and so forth, and maybe that's what your concern is.
I might be able to confuse the topic. They are, in a pawn shop, you're, you're bringing an item in to pawn or hold for you in exchange for, for money, and you can come and pick it back up.
Yeah, but sometimes they sell them.
If they're, I understand that if it's a certain amount of time. They're only intending to buy precious metals. But we can bring it, we can.
Do they, again, do they have to meet the same requirements? If you go in to sell something at a pawn shop, they get, they have to take your driver's license information, and I think they have to report that to the police on a weekly or monthly basis. Anyone that's, you know, in case, in case there's items that have been stolen, that have been brought in.
We can.
Isn't there a background check?
I'm sorry.
Has there been a background check on any of these people or anything?
Um, it's in the progress right now.
I, I.
Should I move to postpone this, Mr. Mayor? There's a lot of questions here under the consent agenda item.
We can postpone it if you'd like for a couple of weeks and bring it back with a little clarification.
I think we shouldn't till the first meeting in September, at least. You want to make a motion? All right.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Ayazi, there is the Lucky Star. That's also under that, and it looks like that's online antique sales. I don't know.
The same thing would apply, though.
Yep, you're right.
We don't have a separate thing for online only.
If I can suggest it, we'll bring all, all of those back.
Okay.
On the September fourteenth agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Did we bring back item one through seven?
Yes.
For the first meet, first meeting in September? Or the second? All right, that's a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Guston?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question on new license, A one, and just for clarification, under the hours of operation, I know it's under twenty-four hours zone, but it says Monday through Thursday, ten a.m. to nine thirty. Is that supposed to be PM or AM? Is that a twenty-three and a half hour?
That's PM, I believe, let me, uh.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that's what I assumed, but.
Yeah. Which one was it?
It was the one, Alex Willie, for the record, again, you are correct, sir, it is nine thirty PM.
PM, okay.
And we did visit the site yesterday.
Well, it says AM, it needs to be corrected, so with that correction, I will go ahead and move to approve that.
Yes.
Okay, have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Guston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think with Mr. Ayazi, I was having trouble discerning what the numbers were, but we're talking on H one? Yeah, okay. My question on that was going to be, it doesn't have hours of operation. But seeing that we're bringing that back, do we need to have hours of operation on that also?
We can include that.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, thank you. Okay, so that's already taken care of, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right.
We're at one o'clock, do you want to go to J two?
Yeah, let me hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Jeff.
Hmm?
Yeah, I think.
Miss, yes.
Yeah, on E, we'll start with the change of ownership under E one, D one, and D five. That's in the Wells Avenue corridor. Does the neighborhood plan affect those?
This is on Smart, is it D one you're talking about?
D one and D five. I just want to make sure, because we had adopted the no, the no liquor within the plan. But I understand this is a change of ownership, but I've gotten several emails on this.
I, I can clarify that. Alex Willie, Code Enforcement Manager here. Yes, ma'am, with regard to the moratorium, that is a zoning requirement, and that does pertain to the use, the actual property itself. So the use did exist there prior, therefore they weren't required to come in for an SUP. And it isn't an additional use, it isn't a new use in the neighborhood.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that these comply with what was adopted by council.
Yes, they do.
And then question on that. Under the zoning requirements for Smart Gas, it says the zoning hours of operation allowed are six a.m. to eleven p.m. But then on the Seven-Eleven, which is also in the corridor, it allows a twenty-four hour use.
Typically, Seven-Elevens, I can't say for sure on this particular one, but typically they will apply for an SUP, which is what is required to be open past eleven p.m. But we can verify that to see if they do have it, excuse me.
But they're not in front of us for an SUP.
No.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. On the, so on number four?
No.
The Seven-Eleven on Virginia Street, oh, on number five, I'm sorry, there we go.
Yes.
We can, we can bring that back and check on the hours of operation on it for you. I don't know the location specifically.
Okay, isn't it consistent with the neighborhood plan? Because you've got one, the zoning hours of operation allowed, and they're both on Wells Avenue. One says six a.m. to eleven p.m. And the other one is the hundred block, and it's twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I think it's consistent throughout the area, so we can check on the hours and bring it back if you'd like.
So how do we approve?
I don't think we should, I think you should postpone it.
You can just, you can, you could continue it to the next meeting.
Or till later today?
Or till later today, that's fine, too.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and continue those two, E one, D one, and five, until staff gets that information.
Okay. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Yes, sir, you had something? Come on up into the mic, identify yourself.
Good morning, everybody, or afternoon, I think.
Whatever.
So, my name is Bonita, and I'm the owner of Smart Gas and Convenience. And I have a question on that, too. If Seven-Elevens allowed twenty-four hours. In the past, the previous owners, they mentioned that the, the gas station, which was Spirit or Jackpot, as it was called, was open twenty-four hours. We are a gas station, Seven-Elevens a convenience store. I mean, we have more people coming to pump gas early in the morning, leaving for work, and so on and so forth. So I would really, you know, think that we need to consider eventually us moving to twenty-four hours. I wasn't even aware of the six to eleven restriction until today.
Well, we'll address it when we bring it back up this afternoon.
We've got to find out what the zoning allows within the plan, so.
Right, I mean, we have this, pretty much the same use as far as our stores go. I mean, there's like, you know, nothing different than what we sell than they sell. And we're like a block away from each other. So, I mean, I don't think, I mean, why would one be allowed twenty-four hours and the other one be allowed only six hours?
Thank you very much. We'll look at it when we come back up.
And then Mayor, on F two, the chocolate bar application, just a question for staff because it's adjacent to a neighborhood, and they're adding on existing bar, this for a cabaret license for live entertainment. And then it says the zoning hours of operation allowed, twenty-four hours. So are they allowed to have live entertainment for twenty-four hours by this approval today?
That location is the former Divine, which does have an SUP for twenty-four hour operation.
Where did it used to be?
The SUP goes with the land.
Where did it used to be?
Divine. It was a club.
I'm sorry, Divine?
It's right next to the movie theater.
Oh, okay. So I'm sorry, I was thinking there, okay, so it's a relocation.
Correct, a relocation.
And they had cabaret? I'm, I'm sorry, their SUP allowed cabaret for twenty-four hours?
No.
The, the new location will, and I think Claudia's checking on that other one, but.
Where is this located?
It's right next to the movie theater.
Right next to the movie theater.
Yeah, there's Del Mar Tacos, there's an ice cream shop, and then Divine was located right between those two and the movie theater, facing Sierra Street.
Yeah, but my question is, I understand that they may be able to operate twenty-four hours, but can they have a cabaret for twenty-four hours? Live entertainment, five a.m. in the morning?
Let me check with zoning, and we'll bring that back, that one back as well, with the other answer for you.
Okay. And then my last one, Mr. Mayor, is G one. Just a technical question here, because it's adding one more slot machine. Does that apply under the moratorium?
You should have received a memo from the attorney's office, but the moratorium is for new land use, and this is an existing land use, so the addition of an additional machine is allowed, and it doesn't fall under the moratorium. So they currently are approved for six machines, and they're adding one extra machine.
Okay, I didn't, I guess, so the moratorium, essentially anyone who has that use now can add on to that use? The moratorium doesn't apply to that?
Long as they're within the state requirements of restricted, which is 15 slot machines.
We put a moratorium on all slot machines right now.
Yeah, I thought.
Because you, you turn down the Mexican restaurant, out in Mexican food restaurant, south of town, and they had slot machines before.
I'm Laura Watson with Lampo's Pizza. We were previously approved for 15 machines, and we added six, and it was our understanding that we could add the seventh one, so.
Well, you can add the seventh one, but we have a moratorium where there can be added right now, or it has to be at the end of the moratorium.
Yeah, I thought we were studying this whole issue on the.
Thank you, looking at two separate issues, though. You're looking at a land use issue versus a licensing issue. We've got the license in front of us, they've already got the land use for 15 machines.
Yep.
So the, the moratorium is on the land use, is what I'm hearing. So it's more of a zoning issue, whereas they've already got the license, they've already got the land use for 15 machines. Licensing has to be notified if they're going to, if they're going to change the number of machines that they have in any, in any restricted license, they've got to notify us of that.
Yeah, and I guess my problem is, again, it's a loophole, then, because then you can have all these existing, the grocery stores, everyone else coming in who have two, who can go up to 15. Under the current, under our current code.
But I thought the moratorium was more to look at where we're going to put these, not, not to, not to, not to address the issue, the issue on the existing. We're looking, again, I think we were, I thought we were looking at the land use, where they, where, where do we want to allow them? Not.
Mr. Ayazi?
Yeah, I think I agree with Dwight on this one. I mean, they're, they've already been approved for 15 here, and they put in less than they were approved for. And I think it's more of a, I'm surprised they have to come back and get permission.
For one.
For one, rather than just say, I'm putting in seven now, so we can keep track of that, that they'd have to go through the hoops, instead of just, like you said, Dwight, informing us that, okay, now we're going to move up to seven.
Yeah, I assume that the reason they have to go through the licensing process is because there's a different, additional charge for each machine.
Right, but that's more of an informal thing to tell us, now, go ahead and start charging me, not that we have to get permission, because they've already had permission for 15.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I can just clarify on, they have permission for up to 15 machines from the state of Nevada. In the control board, but the city, the city of Reno City Council approved them for six.
Oh, okay.
With their initial application. If you approved them for 15 in their initial application, and they only put in six machines, we wouldn't come back to add more.
You would or wouldn't?
Would not.
Would not?
Because the city council has already approved up to 15.
Right.
Or whatever that number happens to be, and we have several others like this coming to you, just as a heads up, September 14th. We're finding some locations are wanting, it's an established use, land use, established on that land, and they want to increase the number of machines, so.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I mean, I'll go ahead and approve it, Mr. Mayor. I just see concerns with this coming down.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, again.
Yes.
Beg the indulgence of the, the council. I know we have a time certain, we'll move forward to that, to J2, but I would like to request that we open F5 first. I'm going to make a, a motion for continuance of that until the 28th of September. I've talked to Claudia Hansen, and there's some, some issues that we need to talk about and get straightened out, and a month's period of time would be plenty to do that, so if you would, the people that are waiting in the audience to, to hear that, F5, if we could just open it, and then I'll continue it, and we can move forward.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Alex.
Thank you, sir. Your honor, I just wanted to inform the city council, as you know, Michael Chomp and I, we visit all the business licenses that come through, and we did observe that six of these businesses were previous vacant commercial structures that had been vacant for more than a year, and we just figured that you should be aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion to continue, item F5.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase.
Yes. Oh, I have to open the public hearing.
Could you open the public hearing?
Madam Secretary, have all this notice has been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, provenance was given, no correspondence was received. You do have one speaker.
Who is it? On this, okay. On F5, Erwin Frank, Ervin Frank?
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to speak? Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Ervin Frank. I'm the owner of Asian Noodles. We expanded into a adjacent building, and we're just looking for approval. I believe all of your applications have been correct, and if there's a problem with it, we'd like to address it.
I'm not sure that's the right agenda item.
No, this, you, you put item F5.
You may have been on consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it under the consent agenda, F5? Yeah, Asian Noodles.
That got approved.
That got, you're approved.
Oh, well, I can go then.
Yes, sir. Wait a minute, you're, you're too lucky today. Thank you, sir. Item F5, there's a motion to continue. Do I have a second, have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. That way we can get some input and stuff on it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Now we'll go to where we go to public hearing. Yeah, we'll go to item J2. Virginia Street Bridge Design. We have people wish to speak. Jill Berryman. Is this not one of the ones you wanted to continue, Mr. Guston?
I think there are a lot of people who showed up, especially for this item, and we ought to give them the opportunity. There's going to be a request for some additional time for testimony and for input for stakeholders, and I, and I kind of want to hear what the public comment is, and then we can, we can move to that point.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jill Berryman. I'm the executive director of Sierra Arts. I'm here today representing Sierra Arts and the Riverside Artist Lofts LLC. I have a letter that Lynette is passing out to all of you from our partners in the building, Artspace Projects. And I'm going to start on page two, so that you know that I'm authorized to do this. We delegate presentation and representation on this regard for the purposes of the meeting on August 24th, 2011, to Jill Berryman, executive director, Sierra Arts owner, Riverside Hotel Artist Lofts. So this is from Bill McGee at Artspace Projects. Honorable officials, this letter addresses the current understanding and position of Artspace Projects, Inc., development sponsor and the managing general partner of the owner of the Riverside Hotel Artist Lofts, The Lofts, with respect to the Virginia Street Bridge project. The project as referenced above, the letter is offered into the record with respect to the agenda item referenced above. We offer this letter in constructive good faith, reflecting our views on the current status of the project and expectations, both procedural, political, economic, and financials, financial, that we believe should govern the values and priorities upon which further decisions are made with respect to the project. This letter is offered in conjunction with Sierra Arts, our partner as owner of The Lofts, as well as in coordination and support of the Wild River Grill, our primary commercial tenant, and a critical contributor to the vibrant Reno riverfront. We understand the design process thus far as follows. The August 24th, 2011 meeting, following the August 2nd, 2011 meeting, are two of many discussions regarding the major bridge design parameters in order to refine and ultimately focus cost, impact, funding applications, et cetera, around a single project plan. This process is led by public works slash engineering staff in order to provide cost slash feasibility analysis and recommendations. We understand the priority to be largely comprehensive flood mitigation, i.e. span design. We presume other primary priorities to be overall cost, overall time under construction, lifespan, and utility to Reno's future. Assuming these, these to be correct, we believe further that the project fully defined must, in addition to flood mitigation, timing, and lifespan reflect the following priorities. Preservation of the Virginia Street Corridor and the Riverwalk as a vibrant, non-motorized, friendly, commercial, and natural resource corridor. Preserving existing civic and private investment in corridor and Riverwalk life notably, include mitigation costs and total project cost, including but not limited to loss of business revenue, provision of temporary crossing at Virginia Street during construction, maintenance of pedestrian access to the Riverwalk, Virginia Street businesses and residences, provision of handicapped access slash consideration to residents and commercial patrons. We also urge the following with respect to the process. Participation of geographic stakeholders in order to provide specific input on the above issues. Validate that participation in the design slash approval process. The city of Reno clearly articulates the full vision of the Riverwalk as a vital pedestrian, commercial slash natural asset of the city, the preservation of which should be adequately funded in the project. We are proud of our partners. Do you want me to continue?
Can you wrap up?
Okay, sure, I just have one more paragraph. We are proud of our partners and our history in the city of Reno with those partners in pioneering residential and commercial revitalization of the riverfront. We hope to continue as strong civic advocates and partners in a successful Virginia Street Bridge redesign slash reconstruction project.
Thank you very much. Alice Baldrica?
Good afternoon. I'm Alice Baldrica. I represent Preserve Nevada. I'm speaking in favor of the process that was employed that resulted in the alternatives that you see before you. They meet prohistoric preservation needs as well as hydrological needs. Just wanted to state our support for what has been done to date. We look forward to working with the city and with the design review committee in the future to, on, on whichever preferred alternative, whichever alternative is selected, to make it a better product. But we're pleased with the results to date, and we're, just wanted to say thank you very much, and a thanks to Kiri Lanza in particular for putting all this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Shapiro?
Hello, my name is Chuck Shapiro, and I'm the owner of the Wild River Grill in the Reno Room, in the River Room downtown, right next to the Virginia Street Bridge Replacement Project. I sent a letter, I believe, to each of you just yesterday. I apologize for the 11th hour nature of that, but I felt it was important to have my voice heard on this particular issue. As a result, Sharla and Carrie from Public Works have reached out to me, which I very much appreciate, and that has helped alleviate a certain amount of my concerns, but not all of them. The letter that I wrote basically requested that no decisions be made at this time until such time as the stakeholders and the people that are, that are directly affected, such as myself, are able to present their views on the subject. I know that there's a design review committee, but I, I think I could make a very arguable case that there is nobody more affected by this project than myself. I have a business that will be virtually in the eye of the storm for who knows how long during construction, and I, while I am concerned very much about the outcome and how the pedestrian flow works at the conclusion of the project, I would like to make sure that I am still around to see the conclusion of the project. That being said, I think the city should take a little bit of a step back and address the project as a whole, including the economic impacts, including those stakeholders that are directly affected. I think that picking a bridge design at this time without exact knowledge of timeframes for construction, how long it will take, whether there's any mitigation, you know, what the associated impacts are with each bridge alternative, it just seems to me like it needs a little bit more time. While I know that the flood issue is a concern, and that we, it needs to be done, and the project needs to be done, I think there's a way that we can all come out intact, and I would like to be a stakeholder and participate in that process. I also believe that the city, beyond a bridge design, needs to articulate a vision for how the Virginia Street Corridor is going to look, how it's going to connect, what the pedestrian traffic flow will be, whether they are committed to the preservation of that retail and pedestrian environment, or if the project is just going to kind of barrel over the local little guy and not take that into consideration. So I have basically four requests that we slow down just a little bit on this whole thing, that we, the city articulate the final product, not just in terms of bridge heights, elevations, ramps, but how is it going to flow and what's going to happen with the Riverside Artist Lofts. I think there needs to be addressed some mitigation and economic impact and those kind of things into any funding requests, and that those are some very big unanswered questions. I think that a stakeholders group of those immediately impacted by the construction should be put together, and those voices should be heard, and and that's basic, that is basically it. To that end, I apologize if I'm going over. I know we already have made progress with the stakeholder, the concept of a stakeholders group.
Let me do this. I, I can't let you just go on, but let me ask you a question, which will allow us to have a dialogue. And that is, I, I do agree with the stakeholders, and some of the issues you've raised are included in the report. So I think that probably you don't have as much, haven't had as much contact or direct input into what has happened to this point. So what I would suggest, and I'm going to ask other people, excuse me, to come forward, too, because I, I know there's been some correspondence about stakeholders, and I'd like to more clearly define those, so we can move forward. So I'm going to suggest that, that you be one of the people that, that is contacted, and go through some of your issues, and the other people that, that may qualify in that same category of stakeholders. So Chuck, so you can, I, I think you have legitimate concerns, but I think some of those things have already been talked about and, and are planned, but you need to know what they are and buy off on them, or at least have your input into that. So I'm going to suggest that you be part of that, as, after this meeting, that you be on the top of the list as the first one of, I expect many today, that will be directly contacted, maybe in a group or maybe individually. So if there's anything else you want to say, go ahead.
Okay, well, I mean, in the staff report and what I've seen so far, and I have asked questions of staff, and I actually have, and one of the meetings was hosted at the River Room, you know, right there. So nobody really does have any answers with regards to mitigation or anything like that. Everything is about bridge alternatives and bridge design, and the need to decide that before any of these other bigger issues can be addressed. And what I'm saying is, I think we need not only to look at where we're going, but how we're going to get there, and that there's a lot of, a lot of big unanswered questions before you can just pick an alternative and move forward.
And of the four you listed, number three was the mitigation and the economic impact, and, and I don't know that I have any answer to that, too, and I think that needs to be resolved. So I, I concur with your statement, and I'm sure that the people that are, are making the outreach and the programs that are going on will need to address that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Barry Schuster?
Good afternoon. Can I get the, is this thing? My name is Barry Schuster, and you've all seen me here before. I'm just here today as a private citizen. I have not been able to attend any of the bridge workshops, so I asked someone to bring me back a handout from the last one. And this is the handout that was given out. I also compared it, it's exactly the same visuals that are on the website. The problem that I have with this is that the, the first three bridges and the, and the bottom two bridges are all shown as having the exact same impact on the roadway, and it's completely inaccurate. There's actually a three-foot elevation on the top three bridges, bridge designs which require a ramp up. So this is a highly inaccurate handout, and this is the information that the public's been given. It's only because I've been a little more involved that I even knew that there would be a difference. So I understand that there was about 70 people who filled out this survey with their feedback, but I'm a little concerned about that feedback, because the, the drawings are very inaccurate, and if we could focus that a little bit more, you can see that they all show exactly the same on the roadway. So this is my first problem. The second problem is that this hasn't come before the NABs at all, and. The second problem is that this hasn't come before the NABs at all, and I think that this is an issue that affects a lot of people and that it should come before the NABs before council makes a decision. There also have been no drawings available at any of the public meetings that show the impact on the roadway, the sidewalks and the Riverwalk, which are basically arteries that circulate people around downtown. I asked for some profile or elevation drawings from city staff last week and I was told that there were none available and that there would be like a video visualization available on the Virginia Street Bridge website on Monday. That actually was not put up and I understand we're going to see it for the first time today. So in reality, the impact of the changes to the sidewalks and the Riverwalk, anyone who's not in this room today hasn't seen it. And I think it's a big issue to consider before a bridge type is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask... Kiri, would you... Can I ask you, maybe if... I don't know if we want to go through all the public comment at once or to address those issues, the accuracy of the drawings?
I think we would concede that while those depictions weren't supposed to reflect the sidewalk impacts, it is true that there is an error showing...
Okay.
That might show and, you know, a differential between the movable bridges versus the static bridges.
What's the Neighborhood Advisory Board Outreach Program?
Well, we were scheduled for all of the neighborhood advisory boards and they happened to be canceled and then weren't scheduled in order to progress this progress, this process.
So they need to be rescheduled?
So they could be rescheduled.
Okay, and I presume the sidewalk impact, has that been delineated?
That was delineated. We made an effort to broadcast that to everybody who attended the public meeting and sent... Everybody who provided an email address was noticed yesterday that the depiction that you'll see today was something they could look at.
Okay, I just wanted to get those three as they came out. I think there is accuracy in that. I also think that this is such an enormous project that the outreach... I remember when we made... When the presentation was made and selection was made and the final four, I mean, the... Each of the applicants made a tremendous amount of... Put a tremendous amount of emphasis on what the outreach would be because that's what the request, the RFP, talked about. So I think we're seeing some of that washback right now, but it needs to be intensified and carried even further in the community because this is an enormous project, which everybody knows. And I know I attended the one at McKinley and I thought it was excellent in terms of the people that were there and the opportunity to talk to people and it wasn't just something that was presented, so it would be absorbed. It was, you know, ask questions. It was free-flowing to the point that I thought it was effective, but I think more outreach is we're seeing now in the public comment. Now, I'll shut up and not talk too much anymore, but the public comment is reflecting that as good as it's been, we need to improve it or increase it or expand it. So thank you for stepping forward.
Yeah, we can certainly appreciate that and we've...
Let me continue on with this then. Thank you very much. Trey Abney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. For the record, Trey Abney with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Mayor, I'll try to keep my comments a little less controversial this time. We've been engaged in this project for a long time. I attended the open house at the McKinley Building a couple of weeks ago and the... And the folks, the city staff, came over and presented to my executive committee, the Chamber's Executive Committee, the five alternatives that we're looking here, the five proposals. And the way it was presented to us, the three fixed span bridges would each cost about $20 million in any of those plans. The two, the movable or the hydraulic type bridges would be about $50 million. Obviously, we're very concerned if you're able to pull together $50 million for this project, and that's a whole nother discussion about, you know, what kind of local funds are we going to use through the flood project and what kind of federal funds can we get for this in this day and age, in Washington especially, not being as generous as they used to be. And we're concerned about making sure, and I had a conversation with Mr. Guston about this the other day, making sure that this is going to provide 100-year flood protection at least to deal with the problem that we've been dealing with. Very concerned again that, you know, spending $50 million on one bridge when you can buy, you know, almost two and a half bridges for that is a concern, especially in these times. But, you know, frankly, Mr. Shapiro brought up a great point. You know, you're talking about cost versus aesthetics and even cost versus what it's going to do to the property values of these properties right around where the bridge is. And, you know, the post office is another one that this city is very interested in and what's going to happen there. And so it's a balancing act, concerned about the movable bridges and the constant maintenance, both staff time and maintenance that it'll take to keep those hydraulics working and you'll have to lift the bridges and move them every once in a while, whether we're flooding or not. So we... At the same time, I know Mr. Shapiro talks about slowing down the process and I think it's important we get all the stakeholders, but if we have all this design and we have a lot of this decided now and we can't do this for another 10 years, there's a good chance you have to do all the engineering, the design all over, again, the NEPA process and all the federal requirements that go along with that. And so we know this bridge needs to be replaced. The Chamber's a strong supporter of doing something, moving forward and replacing this bridge, but again, just to reiterate, very concerned about the cost of the last two options. But I had a conversation with the mayor about the ramp up, the three-feet ramp up from almost Mill to First Street and what that does and how we can mitigate any potential problems with the property owners around that bridge. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
The Chamber, what would be the position if we spend over $50 million settling claims with what it does to harm these other businesses and not use a hydraulic bridge?
Well, I completely agree. If you end up spending the same amount of money in lawsuits and everything else. Now, you know, we've had a lot of conversations before...
Yes, we have.
And this council about lawsuits and the potential, you know, should you move forward, not worrying about lawsuits and things like that, but that's a valid concern. I completely agree.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Bob Rusk.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, all ladies and gentlemen, honorable people. The Downtown Improvement Association I represent today, we're now the RAD, if you haven't been brought up to date, the Regional Alliance for Downtown. In 1997, the flood down First Street and Sierra and Ralston Street where I was hanging out left our properties underwater, well underwater. This past spring, we had one of the record snowpaks dating back to 1995. So all spring, we got to hold our breath, hoping that we weren't going to be inundated once again. The loss of the bridge in the meantime would be very bad for downtown Reno and apparently that can happen about any time. So expedite this process. I've been to virtually since 1997 flood, every public hearing on bridges. We've been through a couple, three attempts to try to choose a bridge and to get it funded, and I know that latter part is going to be the greatest challenge, but what you've got going here as far as our group in downtown is, first of all, we'd like to see somebody that's a stakeholder in downtown to be added to your Design Review Committee because there are no stakeholders. There's lots of historic people, but the Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Redevelopment has been left off, so we might just... You might consider that. So we'd like to see you pick a bridge that is least expensive and can be funded the most quickly. And the staff has recommended items one through five. We accept one through three, again, based on the conditions that I've just cited. Full speed ahead, council. We need to get this done way sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Ross.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I basically can almost concur with almost everything that's been said before me, is that please look at future input of stakeholders as you see fit and as we go forward. One thing I do want to say and add on to what they have said, in your package, in your staff report, they have your proposed motion where they discuss A through E of the different types of bridges. As Bob says, the first three is the DIA and myself included would go forward with the choice of those three, the rigid frame being my number one and the extra doors being my number two. The hydraulic lift and the drawbridge, I just want to make you think about that, maybe a little bit further in a different, simple sort of way. I personally am really against those. My analogy to you would be when you go into a building that has an exterior wheelchair ramp. A wheelchair ramp is probably used in a good majority of the buildings, and I'm talking about lots of buildings, maybe two or three times a year. Those wheelchair lifts are hydraulics and they need a lot of work on them, and normally when it comes to the time of using them, they're dried up and hard to move. With the bridges like this, the maintenance costs that I believe will go over the next 100 years at the length of this bridge is going out, I'd rather see that maintenance cost considered into the cost of the bridge we're going to now put up versus having that go forward. Also, I believe that those people that are on board right now, the engineers that are on board right now, the people, if we do get mechanical bridges, are going to understand it and they're going to be right behind in greasing the bridges, whatever needs to be done. But if there's no floods as the time goes by, I think that's going to be left out and left field, and I think it's going to be very difficult for us to use those bridges. I will remind you, and this is my other, not an analogy, but the truth. The amphitheater, the Wingfield Amphitheater, brick wall that faces Arlington was built in I-beams, and I'm going to use the term I-beams. It was built as a brick structure and it has big hooks in it. That structure was built so that when a flood came, a crane could come and attach onto, I'll call them hooks, whatever's on the outside of that to pull it out. When the flood came, no one remembered. At the time it was built and done, everybody remembered, probably for a couple of years after that, but when the flood came, that was a barrier and stacked up a lot of trees against it and it was a bad portion for helping block it up with water. In closing, I'd like to say, if you do make a choice today and you do go forward, please do not consider the hydraulic movable type bridges or drawbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Honig-Bear.
For the record, Sharon Honig-Bear. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am speaking today on behalf of Historic Reno Preservation Society. You know, if we had our druthers many years ago, we would retain the bridge that we currently have. It's our logo, but we're not here to discuss that today. We're here to talk about the replacement of the bridge and as a board, we've just been a little concerned. I think we really respect the process that's been going on. We have been at the table as part of the Design Committee and Kiri has done a really good job in making sure that those of us who have said, "We want to know," have been kept informed. But one of the things that has come up for us in more recent weeks is that there are people and stakeholders, just to use the word we keep using, that have not been as informed as we're comfortable with. And I think many of those people have already spoken, so I don't need to repeat what they're saying. Our basic position right now is, we don't want to obfuscate here, but we think that a little bit more process might be in order to make sure all the key stakeholders, particularly the people, the building that will be affected, I believe, the most and the one, of course, that we're most concerned about, which is the Riverside, that everything is done to preserve and give as good an access to that building as possible. I think, for me, a big part of it is, and someone has already spoken about the cost of the aesthetics. It's a beautiful building. We want it to be as beautiful for the next generation. Someone's talking, talked about the effects on property value. You have to factor all those costs in, but I'd also like you to consider the costs of what this does if you change the elevations too much, what it does for our pedestrians, for our visitors, for our enjoyment. We finally have some stuff going on downtown where people can come and really make a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly downtown. We don't want to ignore that cost too, that when you're coming down to cost, it's not just dollars and cents. And one of... So if we had our druthers, we would have you consider, unlike the previous two speakers, one of the movable bridges that... Or some other way where you can maintain as close to a grade-level crossing as possible because the... Whenever you start raising the level of the bridge, the impact on important buildings to us on both sides really seem to be somewhat at jeopardy and concerned about the people who have to use those buildings and appreciate the crossing. So we'd like to see a postponement or a little bit more time to involve the stakeholders and serious consideration to a movable bridge, taking all costs into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to... Sharon, if I could ask you just a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we've had a couple stakeholders identify themselves, Chuck Shapiro and Barry Schuster, who's the president of the NAB, the Neighborhood Advisory Board and Councilman of Frazas Ward. And I realize that the tentacles of Historic Resources Preservation Society, HARP, are broad in this community, and I'm wondering if you could go ahead and name or give us some, when you talk about stakeholders, so we make sure that we can be as inclusive as possible in this. Maybe you're talking generically, I don't know, but if you have some people that are stakeholders, I think that have been left out of the process for whatever reason, we certainly would love to hear them and the people from Jacobs and our staff here would love to hear who they are so we can make sure they're included.
And I don't necessarily know every... I mean, I understand, for instance, if you were part of the DIA, you might know about certain things, but I think certainly having the kinds of one-on-ones that just happened with the stakeholders at the Riverside has the... I'm not sure that the Pioneer, you know, the ramping starts right in front of the... Outside the Pioneer, has the Pioneer been directly involved? I understand Bruka did not have a direct... In other words, to take it beyond just you can show up on the August 2 public meeting, but to actually sit down and understand with buildings that were directly affected on either side of the river, what the impacts are going to be, are... To understand what those elevations look like, to understand the safety features. Those points have been raised to me, how safe are they, once you start looking at ramps and...
I get what you're saying. What I was trying to be is inclusive. I understand the obvious ones. What I was trying to find out, are there ones, other stakeholders, that may not be as obvious to us that HARP or you are in contact with, you could let us know so we can include them?
I'd be glad to look further, but I know certainly the Riverside, the Riverside...
We understand those.
Pioneer, Bruka and the Masonic Building on the other side.
Okay, I got it. Thank you very much.
Since the Masonic Lodge owns Bruka's theater and everything on that, they should be involved in it. And also, some individuals are looking at buying the post office. We should look into that if they are and have them involved in it too because when it ramps out too far, it kills that project.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we are through the public comment. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Yes, ma'am. Would you come forward, please, and when you're through, would you fill out a form with our clerk?
I filled one out.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Janet Copeland-Gould. I am here to represent Nevada Sage Rush Chapter. I'm the Regent. I'm also the History of DAR and Northern Nevada Committee Representative for DAR. Honorable Mayor and respected council members of the City of Reno, the Nevada State Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, wish to thank you for allowing us to participate in the visioning process. The Nevada Sage Rush DAR Chapter presented a bronze tablet to the City of Reno on May 31, 1930. This historical marker is on the bridge pillar at the southeast corner of the Virginia Street Bridge. It marks the forwarding place where the first pioneers crossed the Truckee River to the Reno... Truckee River into Reno on their way to California on the Overland Trail. The site is also known as Lakes Crossing, where Nevada's first bridge was built in 1860 and later the City of Reno was developed. and later the City of Reno was developed. In the spirit of preserving the past, enhancing the present, and investing in the future, the Nevada State DAR encourages that the historic ambience of the bridge be maintained in the new design. We would also request that the bridge reconstruction design consider a new location for the marker in the same general vicinity so that the historical significance of the bridge may still be noted and remembered. I also have currently been receiving donations to help pay for this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Charlotte.
For the record, Charlotte Honey with Public Works. Would you have a brief presentation about the process? Would you like to proceed with that?
We will. I would get the sense of the other council first.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure we'll do that.
Great.
One last request, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment. Mr. Mayor, would you like to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Council members, any questions or comments at this point? Yeah. Councilman Aziz?
The only question I have right now regarding some of the public comment was this, who's on this committee right now? That's not a committee we formed, is it? Not the City Council didn't form that committee.
No. You and I have sit on that committee, but it was actually formed by staff, right?
Well, actually, the committee was a term of the programmatic agreement. That programmatic agreement was between the Army Corps and the Nevada State Historic Preservation Office. Formally, they did form the committee together. I would say that they allowed us to sit on, watch that.
I just wanted the public to know that wasn't formed, because we had to, we're members of the committee as a council member, and it has to be agendized because more than one of us is there, but we didn't form the committee. So adding people on is not something that we get to do.
In fact, subsequent to the committee being formed, we have had a number of people asked to be on the DRC. We have forwarded those requests to the Corps, who have fairly considered that or not, and in no case have there been any additions to the DRC.
And then, who actually gets to decide on the bridge?
We do. Isn't the City Council make the ultimate decision?
I believe so. I believe so, as long as it's within the terms of the historic criteria that has been placed.
And also, what the Army Corps says about the elevation has to be met?
We believe that could be true for purposes of crediting for the overall flood project.
And is that crediting still, I don't want to get out of, are you going to continue it soon or we have more comments or?
I think, from the public comment we've had, in my opinion, it's worthy to continue this to make sure that we are as totally inclusive as we could be for the stakeholders as they've been defined by different speakers or people in the community. Because I do know that Jacobs Engineering and their team have worked as diligently as you can to try to reach so many people. And the presentation I repeated at McKinley, I thought, was exceptional. I've seen a lot of these, I thought, as you reached out. But if there are still people that need to be included in this, because what's ultimately going to happen, I'm jumping ahead a little bit here, but what's ultimately going to happen is, we are not going to be fully reimbursed for the bridge, no matter what sponsorship we get. So I believe that the people from the Flood Committee can talk about this, but when I was on, and I'm not long, anymore on, you and Councilman Sefrazas are on there, but I think we're looking at ultimately, assessment in the people living in the community, isn't that the fundraising device we're looking for?
Well, I was going to ask that question today, so that everyone knows exactly where we are, because Jay is here, so we all know, in these public meetings, it's not imminent anyway. Everybody says we should postpone this, but it's not really imminent to build this thing.
I think, Councilman Zadra asked me this question earlier, you know, we're going through this and we don't know what the funding source is going to be, but from my perspective, what I think we need to do is, we need to keep this process going, because it is, there's $2 million funded to make sure that we move forward on the Virginia Street Bridge and we have some process or some selection ultimately when we come to conclusion on this agenda item. And then, the funding is an additional question to be answered. But I think we need to move forward, including everybody we can, get all the impact and say, okay, now we've gotten it, now we make the decision. And then, we find out, however that goes, after the answer to your question, Dave, I'm speculating here, but the answer to your question is, then we learn what the funding sources, the opportunities are. But in terms of the process we're going through now, I think we can slow it down a little bit, but not a great deal. Let's make sure, that's why I keep asking the question, are there other stakeholders that can be identified? So as much as we try, you know, in anything, you can't include everybody, as much as you try, you try to reach out to everybody, but just let every source that we can and the media and information that this is happening, and get those people, and if we miss somebody, we miss somebody, but I think there are still some people to reach.
Yeah, my question was, is it still being matched by the Corps, or is it money we would have to raise separately? And that's?
Would you like to ask that question?
I would love to ask that question. Where are we with, because I know we just made some decisions on downtown projects. Where specifically is the Virginia Street Bridge so far with flood control?
The Virginia Street, for the record, Jay Aldine, Executive Director, acting Executive Director of the Flood Project. The Virginia Street Bridge is a project that is classified as a LURD, meaning that the local community pays for that bridge. It also figures into the crediting formula that is fairly complex and I'm probably not ready to discuss it. It basically goes to, if we spend up to 35% on LURDs, then we pay for all of that 35%. If it goes up to 50%, then the Corps starts cost sharing. And I probably need to give you an example, rather than just spout this from the dais here. But the bridge, if it is built according to the minimum Corps standards as set forth in the GRR, in the engineering document that the Corps is producing, if the bridge is built to that minimum standard, then it would be creditable in the long run and for our benefit. Something that this, the City Council does need to consider, if a substandard bridge is built, not only does this local community have to pay for that and fund that, but also, we could also lose what the Corps terms as benefits downtown, and because the Virginia Street Bridge is the single most important improvement that's being made downtown, the very most important improvement, if we lose the bridge and we don't get it creditable, then we lose the benefits associated with that as well, and we could lose all of downtown, all of the projects downtown.
Dave, can I?
I know it'll be alarmist, but I just need to basically put that on the record.
I want people to know that moving forward.
Can I ask a question? When you say "substandard," are you talking about flood protection?
I'm talking about, in the GRR, the Corps has basically developed a plan to produce a 50-year design. Now, that's an item for a Flood Management Authority discussion, but we intend on raising that by making sure that we include all the flood walls downtown as part of the overall flood project. But the 50-year design under a bridge would have to have four feet of freeboard. Okay? Right now, we're sitting fairly close to that with the soffit, soffit being the underneath elevation of the bridge. We're standing pretty close to that at this time. I think this council, some years ago, approved a 100-year plus two. It's very close, and we can make the grades work out to make it 50-year plus four. I don't want to get involved with all the criteria, but what I'm saying is, the bridge, as it is conceived, with the elevated, with the little bit, two and a half to three foot of elevation, in order to get it up a little bit, will suffice and work for that requirement.
The comment I need to make is, without pointing at you or putting it on you, the 50-year protection, to go and spend 20-plus million dollars, whatever that is, for 50 years, it doesn't make sense to me. And that's what we talked about before. We talked about the 100-year, well, I know, we started out at 117. And I do catch what you're saying, Jay, but I think that's where the council ultimately is going to have that decision, is if the community's going to pay for that, are we going to pay $20 million for a bridge that gives us the same amount of protection that we have now? Or are we going to take a better look at doing whatever reconstructive process we can go through for the current bridge and spend a lot less money? And I'm not asking you really to comment, you can if you wish, but that's something I think, as seven council members need to say to the community, Reno and Washoe County and/or the other areas, Sparks and the unincorporated areas, is if everybody's going to be assessed to build a bridge that still only gives 50 years protection, I mean, I think that's something that we're going to have to make a tough decision on.
I do have a couple of comments. And the first comment would be, we knew that we would, as this council has already considered, it wanted to be able to make sure that it passed 100-year flow rate. And allow us to be able to build our flood walls to very close to 100-year protection for the downtown area. We were unable to develop a configuration for the bridge that would pass 100-year plus four, which is what, under FEMA mapping requirements, would require in order to take the whole downtown out of the floodplain. So, it will pass 100-year, and because it's a free span, a clear-span bridge, we're not going to have any debris hanging up underneath it like currently does and also currently happens at Center Street. However, the Virginia Street Bridge, the current configuration is so overwhelming, it grabs almost all of the debris. If we fix the Virginia Street Bridge, then Public Works is still going to have to man a debris-removing operation for Center Street. But that is, that's just facts, that's just what we're going to have to deal with and the decisions that this body has to make. The other comment I wanted to make is, in consideration of a movable bridge, the engineering is possible, Jacobs has done a good job in looking at the potential for that to occur, has given us a fairly good cost estimate. Paul and myself got together earlier and we came up with 60 million, so we weren't too far off on a bridge like that. And when you think of all the effort that goes into doing that, the thing that I wanted to mention and remind the council is that we also have, our LPP has three additional bridges that we want to replace downtown. Even if we went to the Core Alternative 3C Plan, which this council has not had a briefing on that yet, but if we went to that more minimal plan, we would probably leave the Center Street Bridge intact and not replace it. But even under the Alt 3C, there will be three bridges being replaced downtown. If you're going to build a movable bridge for Virginia Street, then perhaps you may want to consider the same concept for Lake Street and Sierra.
And you know, and I understand, I'm not disputing the fact that it could be 50 or 60 million, but what happens is, it comes in the realm of affordability. I understand, and that's ultimately the linchpin. Let me ask you one other question, which I think you probably know. The CFS for Virginia? CFS for Virginia and Center and Lake Street, do you know those off the top of your head?
I don't know what the actual amount is, but I've been told that, what's that? But the current bridge can only pass a 20-year, isn't it? Or something, or around there?
Yes, we understand that the current bridge can, the current Virginia Street Bridge can pass about a 20-year with consideration for the chorus freeboard, which is four feet.
Okay. I apologize for my misstatement about 50, comparing 50 and 50, but the flow per second is what I'm getting at. I don't mean to talk in acronyms. And by the way, the LPP, so people know, is Locally Preferred Plan you were talking about that has been approved. But the CFS is the amount of water that flows through Virginia Street, Lake Street, and, excuse me, Virginia Center and Lake Street, they're much different. Are they the same?
They're pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you.
And CFS stands for cubic feet of water per second. I heard a good sportscaster give an example of one basketball per second.
The?
And we're talking about 14,000 of them.
Councilman Sefrazas?
I guess my question would be, and maybe it's for John, is on the bridge itself, what's the condition index on that bridge right now?
Charlotte Honey, currently, this efficiency rating on that bridge is 16, which is out of 100.
Yeah, so it's one of the worst, yeah. I mean, the bridge needs to be replaced, I think we've all determined that. I guess my question for staff is, can this be a standalone project with, who is it? NDOT Federal Highways, without the flood control project?
Okay, and so formerly, before working with the Army Corps, we were working with the Federal Highway Administration and NDOT through their bridge program. And the bridge program for NDOT is about, right now, a $10 million pot that can be used for bridge modifications, but that competes statewide. Recently, they have let me know that, yes, this bridge would likely, you know, be a candidate for that. It is not currently in their queue for funding. And then, I guess the other issue was that, of course, you know, what bridges are currently programmed would not also get funding. So there would be a director's decision on the part of NDOT. We did step away from working with the Federal Highway Administration because of their lack of funding, their inability to help us, you know, reach where we thought the actual bridge construction costs might fall. Right now, you've seen the lowest of about 20 million. So the $10 million distributed statewide, I've learned that this might be a candidate for four or five million, just wouldn't get us there. The other issue, and I'm sorry to preempt your question, Jay did mention that if we do perhaps accept other federal funding, we could jeopardize the downtown project and Corps participation by accepting other federal monies.
Well, I guess, based on the new plan that's gone forward and the council hasn't been briefed, they've essentially taken everything out for downtown.
That's right.
So I don't know how, Mr. Mayor, it even matters at this point of us getting credit for, I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, we have to pay it all anyway, but on the overall project, we get credit. But since all of Reno's elements are basically fallen by the wayside, I don't, I think we've really got to reevaluate this and say, should we be doing this as a standalone project with NDOT? Because we know, Mr. Mayor, aside from the flood control project, that this bridge, I believe at one point, was the worst-rated bridge in the state, 16. So we know that it has to be replaced for safety issues. And so my concern is that we get, maybe Bob, you'll need to start growing your hair again, but that we, I mean, we do have to look at the practicality of the costs on this, because there may or may not be an entire flood project that goes forward, number one, but number two, even if it goes down that route, the locals are still, we still have to pay the entire costs. And the benefit of doing that before, when we're looking at an overall flood control project, is that that would benefit other elements of the project. But since that point in time, really, everything's been dropped for the City of Reno, in my opinion. So I think we've got to take that under consideration now, as we're evaluating, looking at this bridge and the practicality of getting it done.
Go ahead.
Just one comment. The way that the Corps plan right now is configured, they would, in essence, give us credit for Virginia, Sierra, and Lake Street Bridges, and no flood walls. We're intending on adding those as part of the project, but you are correct. But the Corps will share in the three bridges that I mentioned.
But they built the Center, they designed and built the Center Street Bridge 10 years ago. How do we know their numbers are accurate?
I believe that that was done by NDOT.
But it was brought up by the Corps of Engineers, wasn't it?
I believe it was.
I think the Corps had something to do with it.
Well, of course, the permitting for the bridge.
That's right.
It was built in 1997, and it was actually an FHWA NDOT project. And the Center Street was designed to a 50-year level of flood protection with two feet of freeboard.
And it doesn't qualify today.
It wouldn't meet the 100 feet, the 100-year with two feet, which is your current standard.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Jay, you said that there would be, the Corps, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, is the Corps actually giving a financial contribution towards the bridge, or is it a credit against the overall costs of the project? That's a big difference.
Well, it is. And the way that the crediting works, at the end of the day, the end of the project, all the expenditures from the local sides are tallied up, they look at all what they call the LURDs, which are lands, easements, rights-of-way disposals. The bridge is obviously a relocation, they call that. And so they would total those, all those up, and they would look and compare that cost to their expenditure for construction. And if our number was, let's say, 25% of the total cost of the whole project, then they would make us pay them an additional 10% and we would get, we would get money for having, we would get credit for having made those expenditures. If our expenditure after the end of the day is now at 45%, that 10% belongs to us. It's a very kind of a strange way of crediting, and as I say, it's kind of difficult to understand, but it just means that we tried, the Corps tries to split the cost 35-65. If we don't make that 35%, then we have to pay it in either form of cash or contributions or in expenditures like for the Virginia Street Bridge and the other bridges downtown. So it is an important cost-share item, because we do get credit for it. The Corps will actually build all the projects. Let's say that, let's say that time wasn't of the essence and really, we just wanted to let the Corps, the Corps would actually... of the essence, and really, we just wanted to let the core, the core would actually build the project, fund the whole construction of the project, and at the end of the day, they would go to reconcile, when the project was over, they'd reconcile and say, well, Reno Sparks, Washoe County, you haven't paid your 35%, you have to jack up to 35%, and then we'll be good. If you, if we have paid more for doing the LERS that we have to pay for, that means moving sewer lines, water lines, bridges, buying land, buying easements, things of that nature, finding locations where the soil is going to be excavated and, and, and replaced, those are all on our nickel, and so our nickel, our column is that 35% column. And, and I don't know if I did a good enough job of explaining it, maybe I need to come back and give you a kind of a, here's the core column, here's the, the Northern Nevada column, or the Washoe County column, and we'll see how that, how that compares, and give you a couple of examples so you can understand how this works. But at the end of the day, it does make a difference because of the three bridges that we have, and those bridges being in the realm of 15 to 25 million dollars, if we get 65% of that given back to us, then that's of value. So, doing it on our own, in my recommendation, right off the cuff, is not a great idea, because I think that there's going to be money left on the table that we won't be able to get our hands on.
Except, I guess that would have been true before, Mr. Mayor, but all the elements for Reno have fallen off the wayside.
That's right.
So I think we do need to explore, and maybe we don't do it all together anymore, we're looking in an assessment where city of Reno residents would be paying the bulk of this project, and all of our elements flew out the window. So why wouldn't we do it alone? I mean, at this point, that's, I mean, and, and then it went, we have 50-year protection now, so we're really not increasing the level of protection that we're getting in the downtown area.
I, I think that there's some questions raised at the council, other than the public comment, which was one direction we were taking about, about the timeline, so, thank you, Jay, very much. What I would like to suggest to the council, and with, with staff's recommendation, as to the outreach, I, I think we need to do some more, before we actually, it actually comes back to us now, there have been other questions raised by the council members as to whether it's a standalone or part of the, the flood project, and, and I think, I'd take their counsel, because they're still there working on the flood project. But I would like to suggest to, to staff that we, whatever timeframe that is, is, is 30 days enough, is 60 days enough, whatever, I, I just need the recommendation, Mello, whoever the handles, handling the outreach, what time do you need to get to the other, quote, stakeholders for input, so we at least have all that, we have that surrounded, then bring it back to the council. I think we need to move forward, if the money that the flood project is put towards this, I believe it's $2 million for this process?
Five.
For the bridge, 5 million?
We've been approved for 5 million up to final design through the flood project funding, yes.
I, I think we ought to go as far as we need to go until we make a decision whether we're going to stand alone, or we're going to be part of the flood project, but keep this process moving so that we don't just waste time, we have, whenever it's said and done, either we're going to reconstruct the bridge that's there, we're going to put a new bridge, whatever it is, we need to keep this process moving, but let's include all the stakeholders with the economic impact that was talked about, and the other outreach. So what are we talking about, 60 days?
In, my assessment of what I've heard here today, I'm thinking that you'd like us to make direct contact with...
Yes.
The immediate vicinity people.
Yes.
And then perhaps go to the NABs.
Yes.
So I would say that we could be back the second meeting in September, without a lot of trouble.
I don't think you can be back, not in September.
No?
October.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what?
Lot of, for staff, to get that...
I, I agree. I mean, it's not the end of the world, so, the end of, let's make it the last meeting in October. I, I want to make sure that we don't have the same meeting where people are coming in with legitimate reason, that they haven't been part of the process. So let's let it know that everybody's going to be part of the process, and we're going to give two months to surround that. Yes?
I also would like to have, from the historical people on here, the, the bridge they screened out due to historic criteria is, is the same bridge that Lake built there when he first built it, with the big arch over it, so I'd like to know what the criteria is that they use. And you can do it later.
For the record, Mella Harmon, I work for Couts Environmental, subconsulting to Jacobs, to lead the Design Review Committee process, and the, the purpose of the Design Review Committee was to meet the requirement in the programmatic agreement. And, and our focus, or the Design Review Committee's focus, was to apply the Secretary of Interior standards to the viewscape and the surrounding historic buildings, relative to any proposed bridge types. We took that bridge type as the initial process, getting into design aspects later. So, one of the main concerns of the initial Design Review Committee meeting was an interest in preserving the historic viewscape, which is a little different than it was when Myron Lake first settled here.
Well, it sure is.
Now there are buildings here.
But it's an open bridge and everything, and you can see through it and everything, there's nothing hiding it.
But I, they felt, the Design Review Committee felt that, that bridge, particularly the, what is that type called?
Arch?
The arch bed bridge, was too much of an impediment to the viewscape, and too much of an impediment on the integrity of the historic buildings immediately adjacent to the bridge.
Okay, I disagree, but that's fine.
One of, one of the aspects of the Secretary of Interior standards are essentially 10 that are involved, but the programmatic agreement directed us to look at only, at two, and they had to do, one of them has to do with looking at scale and massing of the proposed project relative to existing buildings. And so that was, the idea was that they, the, the group, the Design Review Committee felt that that, that style of bridge and the height of the arch, which was something like, was it 30 feet, Brian? It was a very high arch, at any rate, felt that that was too great of an impact on the surrounding buildings.
Thank you very much.
Little bitty pipe.
When you and Mr. Lake designed it, Mr. Mayor, they had different...
Yeah, no, when Lake and I designed that, it didn't hurt anything, and it didn't hurt it today.
I understand.
This gentleman back here is about to have a heart attack, would like to say something, and then we're going to cut you off. Hurry up, you've got one minute.
All right, I can do it in one minute. The, the bridges that stand...
Talk into the mic, identify yourself for the record.
Alf Townsend, live in downtown at the Arlington Towers. The people that live downtown or within the floodplain are going to be hit with an assessment that's unbelievable. Ms. Ferrazza, I think, they hit the nail on the head. My understanding is, those who live closest to the river will pay the most. If you, the further away you live from the water, their, their assessment will be less. And to those here on, I don't mean to be cruel, but most of the people here on the board, on the city council, will pay the least because you live in the suburbs. Now, this is a very serious thing, these assessments are, are going to be terrible. How do you expect people living in downtown are going to pay for a $20 million bill, a $20 million bridge, when you know very well, with all the cost overruns, that $20 million bridge could reach 80 million? Now, how's that going to, what are you going to do about cost overruns?
We'll take that in consideration, your minute's up, thank you very much. We understand where you're coming from. Go ahead, Mr. Jacobs. No, you're in.
I live closer to the river than anybody.
I was going to say...
Okay, anyway, I, I, I would make a motion that we continue with the outreach, and the staff bring back a presentation, the second meeting in October.
Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go to... We'll go to public hearings. Item F1, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Bring you back to the table for discussion. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item F11, ordinance.
This is Bill Number 6761, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code, Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08201, entitled, "Permitted Uses by Base Zone District to Allow Childcare Centers in Certain Residential Zoning Districts With the Approval of a Special Use Permit Together with Other Matters of Property Relating There Too."
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent on item F2?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we see one of their concerns of town, of YESCO.
Okay, you can sit down, Mr. Weatherby, I'll call you in a minute. Before we open it up, I'm going to call Jennifer Capurro. Jennifer Capurro.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Jennifer Capurro, Vice Chair of the Reno Sparks Association of Realtors Legislative Committee. We wish to thank city staff, in particular Deputy City Attorney Marilyn Craig, for listening to our concerns and attempting to work with us. We understand that our perspective is narrow as we look at how the language and how the application of the ordinance will impact our particular industry. We also understand that the ordinance must be written in a manner that has wide application and implications. We have three areas of recommendations regarding the language. The language addressing the use of off-premise temporary signs only allows the use of A-frame signs. We typically call these open house signs, and limits their usage to only Saturday and Sundays. Given a down and difficult market, our members must use all of their efforts in representing their clients with selling their home. If you were one of our clients, you would expect no less. Open house opportunities provide that extra measure that may be of use. That said, new business models do not necessarily call for use of A-frame directional signs for an open house. These types of signs made of different configurations, yet they meet the size and height limitations. We would ask for removal of the limitation of only using A-frame signs. Additionally, previous business models only held open houses on the weekends, this is no longer the case, and we would ask that the Saturday and Sunday limitation be removed. We would also ask that you reconsider the language, which limits on-premise temporary signs to only be displayed for a maximum of 24 months. In respect to commercial property, and in some cases residential property, 24 months may not be sufficient. It is not uncommon for commercial property especially to be on the market well past 24 months. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you very much. Tom Weatherby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Tom Weatherby, 23-year resident of the Truckee Meadows, been with Young Electric Sign Company, or YESCO, for 18 years. I'm pretty much in agreement with most of the provisions, and understand the reasoning that you need to make these changes at this time. One of the things that I saw that possibly could take a look at would be, any old code directional's under four square feet, non-illuminated, you know, drive-in teller, that sort of thing, were not counted in the total allowable sign area, and were not required to have a permit, and I believe the way they've written now, they are. I can see that being an issue for a bank, or a, a fast food restaurant, or something like that. Also, you know, I'm not real sure I totally understand the temporary sign part of the code, but it appears that banners, car dealer flyers, streamers, things like that, balloons, inflatables are all going to be lumped into this temporary sign category, and I'm not sure if they have to go through the same permit process that a normal permanent sign does. So that would be two things I'd want clarified a little easier than what I've read so far. One issue I see, no matter what you do with this, is enforcement seems to be lacking at enforcing the code that you even have now. I know where there's been banners up for six years in the city of Reno. I know where there's freestanding signs within 100 feet of the 395 that have been put up in the last 10 years, I know where four of them are personally, and the permit they pull says, they've got to be 100 feet away from the freeway right of way, and they're 55, 60 feet away, and they were issued and allowed anyway. So, whatever you do, you've got to do a better job, I feel, at enforcing the code that you have, whatever you come up with. One other example was a motel on South Virginia, which was allowed to put up a new freestanding sign with the proviso that a existing sign was removed. Still there three years later, and recently has been refurbished, and it's got new faces in it, it's all lit up. So, the other thing I would ask that, if not now, in the near future, that mixed use be looked at. I have seen some issues from a, a sales standpoint, and from a, working with a customer, that the 400-square-foot limitation has become an issue on some, like 50 West Liberty over here, where you have Bank of America, if that's all on one parcel, there's a 400-square-foot limitation on the, the footage. 5500 South Virginia, same way. It's a completely retail center, it's really not a mixed use, it was originally AC, but the existing businesses have well over 400 square feet of signage, and when a new guy comes in, he's not able to get anything but the, the minimum 40 square feet that he's allowed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aaron West?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Aaron West with Clear Channel Outdoor, just wanted to thank staff for their diligence in proceeding with the corrections put before you. Clear Channel Outdoor stands in support of the recommendations as presented, especially as it relates to Section 16, 18.16.908, with respect to expiration of the bank receipts. We felt that the current language is fairly ambiguous, and this new, the proposed language would tighten that up going forward, so thank you.
Thank you very much. No other public comments, I'll bring you back to the table, staff.
Good afternoon, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. Staff does not have an overall presentation, but we are available for question. Planning Commission did support the amendments, and we're available for questions to, or to go over the ordinance in general.
Okay, Ms. Ed.
Claudia, just for the purpose, I, I didn't get the gentleman's name that, that talked about, or I don't remember who specifically, but we asked, I asked this question of you earlier today about the seven days a week, and was advised that it was, was actually one of the Realtors, that, you know, they need to be able to put their open house signs up on a Tuesday or a Thursday, and we were advised that that restriction does not exist in this language, is that right, Claudia?
Correct, right now it's just the Saturday and Sunday.
It limits it to Saturdays?
It limits it to Saturday or Sunday, but I believe I understood from Marilyn that that, that is not...
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. There are two sections. The limitation is on the on-premises portion of it, there is a whole current off-premises temporary, which is what they currently have, so actually, this is providing additional opportunity to put out their signs. One temporary off-premise, which they currently have, the new provision, which is on-premises, limited to Saturday and Sunday, because everyone, not just Realtors or others, but all people can use that opportunity to use the on-premises.
So they could put the A-frame in public right of way, or own private property for seven days a week?
Not the A-frame in the public, not in the public right of way, only on Saturday and Sundays.
In the right of way.
Not in the right of way on Saturday, or on Saturday and Sundays, they can put it in the right of way. They don't have that right to do it now at all, so this is expanded for them.
But the rest of the time, they can put it in their yard?
They can put it in the yards, and they can put it on somebody else's property.
If they agree, okay. Any other questions? Mr. Asher?
What about this, what about this notion of taking the A-frame, changing the definition, so that they could put their sign in the right of way, seven days a week?
That's fine, we can change it to A-frame or other similar type sign, so it's, I think she stated that it was, it's the same size and square footage, so we would just say it, and other similar type signs.
But then we'd still have the restriction, does that, by changing the definition, does that allow them to put an open house sign seven days a week in the right of way? Or is it still limited to Saturday and Sunday?
I see Marilyn coming up.
It's still limited to Saturday and Sunday to put it into the right of ways, this is a brand-new idea, was to allow them, quite frankly, we are getting a lot of complaints about people putting the signs, especially the real estate industry, of putting their signs in the right of way, and so this was an opportunity to provide a way for them to do it, but on limited days only. Other than that, it would be on the private property.
Well, help me out, because I haven't gotten any complaints, are we getting a lot of complaints about, because when I travel up, you know, up and down streets like everybody else, I... down streets like everybody else, I really don't see that many of them out there. Are we getting a lot of complaints?
I've received several.
What's that, more than 25?
No, I wouldn't, I don't think it's more than 25, no.
So what, less than 10 in a year?
I don't know that I could put a number on it.
And then, then this other 24-month rule, what was the, what was the policy behind that?
The 24-month?
And I, and so, you know, I am sensitive, 'cause obviously people are trying to move homes. The more homes we move around here, the better we're gonna, we're gonna reduce this inventory that's causing this community a lot of problem.
And not just homes, they're trying to move commercial stuff.
Uh, correct.
Right.
But I mean, that's, that's the right-of-ways with the residential primarily, so...
Right. And the 24-month, we put that in there under the temporary standard, so after 24 months, we felt that was no longer temporary. And they could still do, they could still have the signage, but it just has to fall under the permanent standards at that point.
But then you have to get a permit, right?
Correct.
And what's the process to get the permit?
It's a signed permit. It just needs to meet the standards for the permanent signage.
So administratively, you just come in and just pay a fee?
Just building permits, it's the same as a building permit.
And what's the fee for that?
I don't know offhand.
Does it take a long time?
Um, I believe it's less than a week typically on a signed permit.
But a couple hundred bucks probably.
I'm sorry?
Probably a couple hundred bucks.
I can't hear you, you have to...
Couple hundred bucks?
Oh, probably.
I asked that question, she doesn't know how much.
It's not, I know billboard signs, billboard permits are quite a bit more, just regular onsite advertising is quite a bit less, and I can get back to you with that amount.
So who else puts signs in the public right-of-way besides Realtors?
Um...
Is that the majority of them?
I, I think that's the best example of it.
I mean, garage sales, I see people with signs with garage sale signs.
I'm sorry, garage sales, sure, that's another example.
I don't, I mean...
The one that's bothering me is those ones way up on telephone pole they put up. I mean, they're all over the place. 1-800-something-or-other.
Those are illegal.
It could be for any use, as long as it's within those standards.
I'm just trying to get my arms, is it really that much of a problem if we allow those signs in the right-of-way? If it becomes a problem, you could always come back and we could change the ordinance or restrict it, but I think now more than ever, it seems that, you know, we should allow some flexibility or so if they need an open house sign in the public right-of-way, and it's just my opinion, for, for seven days. Maybe we could do it for six months and see if it's really that much of a problem.
Well, and as Marilyn said, they're not allowed now. So this is opening it up more at this point, and if we see that we wanna go more later, we can always do that.
That's another option.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's what Pierre's saying, is let's try it seven days a week now.
Yeah, that's what I am saying.
And if we, if we have to, we can restrict it further. Only question I have with that, that wouldn't allow political signage in the right-of-way, would it?
I believe it would. Let me just take a look at it again. I just wanna look at it because I'm not, I, I think for the most part it would. Anytime you have a commercial sign, you can put up non-commercial advertising or non-commercial message on it. So that's a possibility.
Then the last question I had, Claudia, was on, on this YESCO letter. Did staff have a chance to review those questions and provide answers?
Yes. I discussed it with Mr. Wethby earlier, and I think we've addressed all of them. And then his, I think his main point is the signage in the MU, and we do intend to come back and review the MU standards. And that's the next, once we get through this and the LED billboard issue, then that'll be the next issue with signs.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me. Once we pass all these things, do we have staff to be able to go out and find out who's violating and stuff and get these corrected? Because we give them, and then nobody ever follows up. It's like our slot machines. We tell people they can have six or seven slot machines, and yet some of them are running 10 to 15 slot machines, which they got into the state and never came back to us. We'd never go out and check them.
We did meet with code enforcement on this proposed ordinance and got some feedback from them and made some changes to work with them, and we can go over this with them for future enforcement.
Okay. Because we need to look at that, and we also need to look at sending somebody out once in a while to see who's recorded for slot machines or what kind of signs they can put up.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Izzy, I mean, Mr. Doritz said yes. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Izzy, I thought you had moved on.
I think you should apologize to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Doritz.
Is, on the, on the signs that go up in the right-of-way, are they limited on the times of day they can have them up in the right-of-way?
I believe that's the one from sunrise to sunset. Let me double-check. That one's from sunrise to sunset on 2A3.
Okay, that might, that might help with my concern of putting up political signs, 'cause I don't think, if they're limited, where they have to be taken down at the end of the day, I don't think you're gonna see them. My concern was you would start seeing political signs going up in the right-of-way and staying there, but they can't stay overnight.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's better.
Now, something that just popped in my little feeble brain. These portable signs that are on trailers, how big are they? What, can they park those in right-of-way?
They can park those vehicles in the right-of-way. Those are not considered a permanent, it's a mobile sign, so we don't regulate it through land use. If it's, if that truck would all of a sudden show up on a parcel and the wheels disappear and we'd start going up around it, then we would have an issue.
No, if it has a license, I mean, it's pulled by a pickup truck, it has a license plate on it and things, it could park anywhere it wants to.
Correct. Yeah, that's just a mobile sign.
Yes. Mr. Doritz.
Thank you. And then, I kind of agree with Pierre that I'm comfortable with opening that up for seven days a week, and if we have an issue, if it becomes an issue, I think we can resolve it. And then, the 24-month limitation?
Yes.
If they take, if they take it down for a day and put it back up, is that, does a new 24 months start? How does that work?
I know Marilyn was looking into that.
If they take it down for a day, the idea of the 24 months is that it's, it's up during the period of time of sale or remodeling or whatever the case may be, but there's no limitation. If they take it for, down for a day, they can start in again.
So they get another 24 months?
They get another 24.
So what, so what good does that 24-month limitation? Because I agree that there are a lot of, I mean, there's probably a lot of properties out there that have been on the market for 24 months or more.
Well, the idea behind it was is that most sales actions, like I say, remodels, garage sales, all of those things are going to, they are all related to an event. But sometimes, sales go on for a period of time. And so what we're trying to say is that there would be a limitation on that period of time you can leave the sign up. Yeah, and, and we didn't...
But essentially, there's really not. I mean, if you take it down for a day, you put it back up, and you've got another 24 months.
Well, you know, so be it. Most people try to comply, and we're trying to say that it's not, we're trying to define it as a temporary sign as opposed to a permanent sign. We can add something that says, and it has to stay down for a period of 10 days or 30 days, but if in fact your, your house is for sale, you don't wanna take your sign down.
Well, that's my, that's my concern with having the 24-month limitation at all.
Well, I understand, but we can't go out checking contracts and so forth.
I mean, but enforcement on that rule too, how, how hard is that gonna be?
Well, again, enforcement...
I mean, are we putting, are we putting a limitation in there that's really impossible to enforce?
Well, but it does give up a handle. Enforcement is generally by complaint, and if there's a complaint, the sign's been up for three years or four years or something like that, then, then they can go and, and target that particular sign. And it's a complaint-driven enforcement system.
If you get the complaint, you're gonna go out and tag it or target it, and then you're gonna wait 24 months to see if it's still up.
Well...
It's probably gonna be 24 months from the date that we're made aware of it, correct? Okay.
You're next. You're next.
Jesse, I went already. I'll wait.
Mr. Izzy, then Mr. President.
Let me ask on this 24-month thing, as an example, and I wanna see if it would apply to this. All these stores on First Street, Second Street, I'm sorry, Second and West and around there, I know we tagged them for temporary signs, 'cause they had those vinyl signs up there for a long, long, long time. And is this the code that we used to tell them they had to replace those signs? I mean, this doesn't really get to address how it looks, but for their on-premises, they just had those, those $100 signs out there, and they were there for years, it seemed like. And that's what I'm more worried about.
I'll have Alex address that.
Alex Woodley, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. Sir, my understanding, the way code, this code reads is specifically for residential properties with regards to these temporary signs. So it is a different section.
Okay. So the 24 months would just be residential, so we're not talking about commercial buildings?
No, sir. My understanding that these signs in the right-of-way is just for in-residential...
I'm talking about the temporary off, temporary on-premise signs. Is that the same code we're talking about?
Like, Mr. Woodley, like the uglies we had on the old hotel over here, are those temporary, or are they...
Yes, sir. Those were considered temporary signs.
So how long should they, did they get to stay up?
My understanding is 90 days with the permit.
Okay, so would that spell it out in the permit?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
It's not changing, I don't believe. It doesn't change it, right?
Correct. No, it doesn't. No, sir.
And I remember a sign on the sundown, or whatever it is now, it was a billboard sign that was there for a long time, it had, it was ripped and torn, and, and I think 24 months is, is okay to at least have something in there, that people just don't leave things up there forever. I mean, it's something to, like Marilyn says, it gives us a handle, at least do something, rather than say they can leave it up there permanently.
Right, as I understand it, 24 months is the temporary issue, so if somebody wanted to leave it there for more than 24 months, they can still do that. They just have to come in and pay for a permit.
Correct.
Correct. And that is under the residential portion also, so it would, it would, it wouldn't be that section specifically for this area over here.
But is, is the residential, I keep forgetting the name of what does, what that used to be, the sundown, that's now residences.
Right, but it's for residential zoning. This is under zoning districts, so it would be your single families and your multifamily districts. That would be MU.
Ms. President?
Yeah, Claudia, just, from my understanding, on the, the temporary signs in public right-of-way, and it spelled out all the limitations on 176 and 177, so where can they put signs in the right-of-way? Under this new code?
And it's on, um, it would be...
If we adopt this...
In excess right-of-way, I guess I would say, or I don't wanna say excess, 'cause it sounds like we don't need it, but not in the travel lanes, not in the parking area, not on the sidewalk. So if there's a parkway or an unpaved area, they could put it in that way, in that area, but nowhere where you could block pedestrian or vehicular traffic.
So they can't put it on the sidewalk, they can't put it in a roundabout? I mean, all this is spelled out here, trees, power poles, anything like that?
Right. It's just, it's kind of in the, the extra areas or the landscape areas, either of those.
I guess, give me an example of that.
A parkway would be an area where you could put it, a parkway, or if there's, sometimes there's, we have a particularly large right-of-way, and currently we only have four lanes paved, and there's an additional dirt area on the side that isn't paved. Kitsky is a good example, just north of Plum, there's those dirt areas on the, on the shoulders.
So, and then just a question, I guess, for Marilyn on that, for liability purposes, if we allow things in the right-of-way, could we potentially get sued? I mean, if someone were to, I mean, are we opening the door here by allowing this? If someone sees a sign, they say, you know, it's in the right-of-way, even if it's vacant, I mean, does that open the door to that?
That, of course, it adds some potential liability, that if, if somehow a sign was misplaced and, but it was, our bigger problem would be if it's placed in accordance with the code and it's still for some reason, you know, somehow, I'm trying to think of an example, I can't right now, but it does, if it were in, in, you know, if it were in accordance with the code, there is potential extra liability. It was simply our attempt to accommodate what has been going on, but to be able to regulate it in some way. If you don't want to do it, we can take those away too.
No, I'm just asking the question, like, I, just an example, car swerved to get out to avoid an accident and into our right-of-way, and there was signage there, and that created a problem.
These, these are not intended to be attached to the ground or anything, so if there were, a car were swerving and hit a sign, it would probably just ruin the sign as opposed to, to something. But I mean, obviously, a car's not supposed to be in that part of the, the right-of-way anyway.
Okay. And then the, just a question, I guess, follow-up with the mayor on the mobile signs, 'cause we haven't really seen that up here too much in northern Nevada, but, but what, how do we regulate those right now, Marilyn? If we had a bunch of trucks coming with just...
About five years ago or so, and I may be off on that, but in that vicinity, the mobile panel trucks came in that had the revolving signage on the sides of the panels that, that moved, and then you see from time to time someone putting a sign on the flatbed truck and so forth. We determined that that would not be something appropriate to regulate by zoning, that that would be something that is related to traffic. And so those are not, especially like the panel trucks and things like that, that drive around town.
Yes, specifically for the purposes of advertising? So that's not spelled out in this ordinance?
That's not, we're not, we're not proceeding under zoning to regulate those.
So where does that come into play? What does regulate that then?
Well, you're, you're, when you start to regulate something like that, then all the trucks that have the signage on the doors, those are all required by PUC. So they generally are not regulated. They're paying their gas taxes, they're driving up and down the road like everyone else is. So they're not regulated from our point of view.
Mr. Izzy?
Hey, Mr. Nadeau, could you just give me a quick estimate of, you know, if you added up all the brokerage firms in this community, the city of Reno, how many signs could potentially be out there on any given one day? Are we talking about thousands of signs if we went seven days a week? Can you give me some kind of an estimate?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Hashf.
Identify yourself for the record.
Jim Nadeau with Carrera, Nevada, Government Affairs Director for the Reno Sparks Association of Realtors. Obviously, it's, there are a lot, there's a lot of, of our members, Realtors, who are trying to move properties, but I, there, I couldn't give you an estimate, but maybe, what, 20, 30 citywide, I gotta believe?
Per day?
I would think maybe. I mean, it's very difficult to pin that down to say specifically how many, how many numbers, but I mean, they're widespread throughout the, around the community. I don't know that this is going to change the number of signs that will be out. I think what it'll do is it'll be able to better provide placement for the signs, so that they can better direct folks to, to open houses and those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, under right-of-way, not you, sir, go ahead. Under right-of-way, you're talking about a street, so you got a, a street that's got a divider in it and a planter and everything. I can put a political sign out in the middle of that?
I believe that's excluded. It says, "Sign shall not be placed in median traffic island or other area within the roadway."
Okay, overlook that.
It needs to be outside of the roadway.
Any other questions? Mr. Izzy?
One more clarification on the right-of-way. Is that only your experience with it?
Also? I'll, I'll tell you my example, is we've had sort of an ongoing fight, as the mayor knows, with the little nugget on their sandwich board in the sidewalk. We've got one out here now for our coffee shop. How does that relate to this sign ordinance? Would that be allowed then? So people up and down Virginia Street can start putting out little sandwich boards?
This is all residential.
So it's still all in residential areas? And how is someone gonna know whether there's own residential or MU when they put something out there? Like you mentioned Kitsky Lane, which is actually, I think, right-of-way by State of Nevada, not by the city of Reno.
Right, and I, after I said that, I was just trying to give an example of what it would look like, it'd be an area like that.
How is somebody supposed to know that you can put it out in a residential area, but you can't put it out in a commercial area?
We'll be happy to assist them with that.
Any other questions?
Well, the only, the only comment I would have, Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with going seven days a week, personally. But if the rest of the council's not comfortable with that, the only other suggestion I would make is we would keep the rule as staff has done it, but then allow a brokerage firm or realtor to come in and apply for a permit and get a blanket permit for, let's say, 20 signs for a set. So if they want to go past the two-day period, they have at least the ability to, to, uh, get a, a permit and pay a fee, and that probably is not a good idea because Marilyn's up here.
You know what I'm gonna say.
No, I don't, tell me.
Well, go ahead and say it, he might know, but we don't.
That would raise questions about the legality of it, of the sign. Because you're favoring one type of sign over another, you're comm, favoring commercial over non-commercial.
No, no, this would apply broad-based.
Anybody.
Anybody, so if Dixon Realty says, "I want to put 20 signs out for seven days a week."
If our example is the homeowner wants to go put up his garage for 20 days, that's one thing. But we cannot say that commercial is going to be favored over non-commercial.
But you would be okay if this rule, this exception, which allows somebody to go seven days a week within the requirements, the time requirements? They just don't want to do it Saturday and Sunday, they just want to do it seven days a week? That anybody could come in, whether it's a realtor or brokerage, whatever, pay a fee, and now they can, they're limited to 20 signs for a week?
I think it's questionable, it's better than your first example.
That was my first example, but it's all right.
So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Alex, we're gonna give you a hundred new employees to enforce this.
Thank you, sir, that's exactly what my point is, thank you.
Well, maybe not a hundred, maybe 75.
Just wanted to comment, Your Honor, Alex Woodley, Code Enforcement Manager, prior to considering going seven days as opposed to two, to just consider the fact, at this point, we do not know what the impact will be for us. Obviously, it'll be code enforcement, as you know, we have reduced staff. And I have some concerns, but I'm all for moving forward and let's see where the chips fall. But, uh, we would just ask, would you please take that into consideration? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Frazek.
Yeah, and, uh, staff had brought up, uh, Councilman Hashef. I guess my concern is too, Mr. Mayor, you can't favor one industry over another. What happens if someone posts something of a sexual nature in a residential neighborhood with a sign? Come to this bookstore, or advertising something that's, that's very offensive. So I could see this really opening the door to Pandora's Box out there in our residential neighborhoods, allowing people to advertise willy-nilly what they want to.
But can't they do that for two days now? Because we can't distinguish between a real-
Not right now, because it's not allowed in the public right-of-way.
At, at all, but if we pass this ordinance, they could put that sign you're talking about on Saturday and Sunday. Because it applies to everybody.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Right now, nobody can do it. Staff has opened it up so you can do it on Saturday and Sunday within a certain time period, which would apply to realtors or the example that you gave. They could do it on Saturday and Sunday under this ordinance.
Yeah, if we allow the change.
Oh, I see, you're talking about not letting anybody do it at all.
I'm just saying, I think there could be some unintended consequences. I have seen signs out there for different businesses with the arrows, and I, I can't specifically say in residential neighborhoods, but I can say on the public right-of-way. And I think it could become problematic. But, I mean, I'm willing to go forward and, and, and see what happens for a, a test run. But I think we're gonna start getting calls about signage and the signs and, and that people, uh, I mean, we've got a case later today, Mr. Mayor, where people get offended over certain content, and we could be opening the door to this.
All right. I got any other comments? Chair will entertain a motion. Somebody want to give me a motion?
Well, I'll, I'll give you a motion, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable with, uh, allowing the seven days and, and we see if there's any trouble. I'm, I'm gonna just put that out there, and I know Jessica's probably not gonna favor that. I, I don't know how the others feel, I'd like to have some discussion before we, uh, if somebody would second that, then we could probably have discussion.
Yeah, do you want to put the change to, um, on the A-frame signs, on the definition of the A-frame?
Give me a second, and then we'll go.
Yeah, correct, th- those two, those two issues, I think for 24 months, they can come in and get a, a permanent permit. Uh, so that probably is okay. But I would be willing to allow the seven days in the public right-of-way with the time restrictions, um, and then the change for the A-frame.
That would just make that, whatever the size?
Give me a, give me a mo, a second.
Well, I'm trying to get the clarification on what the motion is.
Well, then we're, well, okay.
Claudia, help me.
And we would also like you to mention the memo with the, with the technical changes that, that is before you.
Oh.
With, with some minor typos that came up.
Items one through six?
Right.
Items one through six.
Yeah, so that, the technical changes that are in the staff memo dated August 24th, which is, uh, one through six would also be, would also be part of the, the motion.
Yep.
So I'll second that.
Okay. Have a second? Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Frazek?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will support the motion because we can change this at any time, um, as the body of the city council. Um, so I want to see how this plays out, um, and if we get complaints on it. And if we do, we can bring it back to this table.
Right.
Okay. I have a motion, second discussion, any discussion further? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously, item F21.
This is Bill Number 6762, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.16 Signs and Chapter 18.24 Rules of Measurement and Definitions, Section 18.24.203, Definition of Words, Terms and Phrases Relating to Signs to Generally Clean Up and Modernize the Provisions Therein and Other Matters of Property Relating To, Which Would Also Include the Amendments 1 through 6 Set Forth in the Memo of August 24th of 2011 for Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, as well as the Changes Proposed by Councilman Hashef and Second by Councilman Deutsch during the discussion of, of F2.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F3, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent? Okay, having none, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion. Staff?
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. Um, this is just, um, some minor revisions to the adult business portion of code to, um, address certain procedural, um, um, issues with how we handle applications and timing on those issues. I'm available for questions.
Any question?
Yeah, with the understanding that you'll go back and, and, um, have some clarity, not for today. We can still approve this today, but as you dig into this, bring back some clarity on the waiver, particularly the, um, the E portion that's on 298.
Sure, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move to accept staff recommendation with that, and understanding staff will look at, uh, the waiver. It's on page 298.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F31, ordinance.
This is Bill Number 6763, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 2, Permitted Uses and Regulations, Section 18.08.202, Additional Regulations for Principal Uses, Subsection B, Commercial Sales and Service Regulations, Subsection 1, Adult Business to Add and Delete Language to Generally Modernize the Provisions and Requirements Therein and Other Matters of Property Relating To, Including the Amendments Proposed by Councilwoman Zadra, which was part of the discussion and acceptance in F3.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent on item F4?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence has received.
All right, having note. That was, bring it back to staff.
Uh, Deputy City Attorney Marilyn Craig, this is a request to, uh, proceed with, uh, the moratorium on the billboards. And we have one change for you, and that is to add the, the word structures on, uh, 18.16.2000. But it is a continuation of the moratorium that you began by resolution. This is now the follow-up ordinance with it. We would ask that you, uh, refer this to the committee.
Okay.
So this for the moratorium adoption?
This is for the moratorium, mhm.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to uphold the recommendation of Planning Commission.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 41, ordinance introduction.
This is Bill Number 6764, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.16 Signs, Article 9, Off-Premise Advertising Displays, Section 18.16.901, etc. To Establish a Moratorium Prohibiting the Acceptance of Applications for New Land Use, Land Uses, Proposing Permanent Off-Premise Advertising Displays, Billboards, Involving Such Uses and Other Matters of Property Rating, excuse me, Properly Relating thereto, Together with the Amendments Proposed by Deputy City Attorney Marilyn Craig, which was accepted as part of F4.
Okay.
Ms. Craig, did you have something to add? Okay. Move to refer.
Have a, a motion, do I have a second? Do you have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F5 has been continued. Uh, now we'll go to ordinance adoptions. Item G1, Amber Meadows.
Okay, let me make sure I know.
Okay. Yep, okay. This is ordinance number 6169, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code
entitled, "Zoning/Resoning a 64.06 acre site bounded by the Interstate 395 to the north, the Grandview Terrace subdivision to the east, North Virginia Street to the south, and Prairie Ridge Drive to the west, from MUNVTC, mixed-use North Virginia Transit Quarter to SF6, single-family residential, 6,000 square feet, together with other matters of property relating thereto." Okay, and before, dude, I, I believe, did I say? Okay, I, I'm sorry, before, it is ordinance number 6196, I may have reversed the numbers in pronouncing it.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye? Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously, item G2.
This, let's see if I can do a better job on this one.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, this is the acceptance of the big business impact statement, which has to be done before the ordinance is read and adopted.
What was that again?
There's a business impact statement, which is G2, you have to accept that first, and then I go to G21, which would be the actual order.
Chair will entertain a motion, item G2.
G22, I mean, actually.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Okay.
For, for staff on, on a G2, on the findings? Finding number two on the statute? Yeah, because this-
Deputy City Attorney Susan Ballroth, you were talking about the new legislation finding you have to make?
Correct. So this, because that was my issue when we heard this in the first place, is that those funds be specifically, by stating this today, does this allow a transfer of the funds to other accounts?
The fund, Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney, your, the finding is pursuant to the new law that the funds are to be used for the purpose for which, in other words, the sewer user fees are to be used for, uh, sewer user fee purposes.
So, that's not my question, can they be loaned from one account to another? Under this determination and finding?
I think under the state law that you can't move these from one fund to another.
Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney, the state law, um, Assembly Bill 471 provides that the governing body of a local government may increase the amount of any fee imposed for which the purpose of an enterprise fund was created, if they improve the increase, and they determine that the increase is not prohibited by law, and the increase is necessary for the continuation and expansion of the purpose for which the enterprise fund was created, in this case sewer, and that all fees are deposited in the enterprise fund used solely for the purpose for which the fees are collected.
Okay.
Any other questions about item G2? Chair will entertain a motion.
Um, okay, go ahead, Dave.
I'll move to accept the, the statement and find that the ordinance does not-
Does not, um, impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G21.
I, I think it's G1 now, Mr. Mayor, right? No, we're okay?
G2.
Never mind.
Item G21.
Yeah, it's G21.
Chair will entertain a motion on item G21.
You know, Mr. Mayor, let me ask a question. I, I, I maybe get a little confused here, but this goes back to discussions we've had before about, about annexation and charging of the same fee. Can we go through that again, and when are we gonna get back to, we're actually paying, the people that are annexed from the county into the city are actually paying the county fee, which is lower than the city fee, right?
Hi, the count, excuse me, for the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. Uh, I think the item that you want to address is in G22.
Okay, that's G22, okay.
The G21 is actually the item, I think we just talked about, which was the findings that it meets the NRS intent.
All right, let me hold it for that, then, thank you, John.
Have a motion?
Second.
Give me a motion? I have a second, but I didn't get a motion.
This is just G21, correct?
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G22.
This is ord, 6197, an ordinance to amend the Reno Municipal Code Title 12 entitled, Public Works and Utilities, Chapter 12.16, Sewer Service by Amending Sections 12.16.010 through 12.16.3500, together with other matters of property relating thereto.
Okay, back to, back to my question then, John. I mean, we're talking about an increase of 4% for a total of 8% through 2015, but I, I don't know what impact that if somebody's annexed, they would immediately pay the city of Reno rates versus us paying the difference because they're assessed at the county rate. Can you go through that again for me?
Certainly, for the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. Uh, how we, the ordinance is written now, is that anyone that is annexed from the county into the city would continue to pay the county rate. So we would not have that differential that we currently have, um, uh, in those, in the South Meadows Double Diamond area, uh, with those, with those residential units and, and businesses being soured to the South Meadows Treatment Plan.
Okay, and I, and I understand that, and we went through a discussion before how those two lines would eventually intersect. We can't make that happen any sooner? But we have to change the ordinance to do that, right?
We, we would need to, uh, uh, make an ordinance change. Staff would recommend that if you wanted to do something sooner and, and establish a different rate for, uh, a certain group of users, that the, the cleanest way to do that would be to bring back an ordinance change to have the rate be determined by the point of service. Therefore, since they're being serviced at the South Truckee, or the South Meadows Treatment Facility, that that's where, that, that would be the rate that they would fall under.
Okay, I guess when we get to new agenda items, I'm gonna put that, because I, I thought the last discussion we had about this, we were gonna do something along that line, not, we weren't? I, I thought we were gonna do that, it just seems unfair to me to do that.
We, we, uh-
Now, we pay, we, somebody gets, have to request, they have to an annexation fee, they have to pay for that, but then still, the city of Reno, uh, users have to subsidize that, I, I don't get that. So I'll, I'll bring it up at the new agenda, uh, future agenda items, and we'll go from there.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions right now?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Frazek.
Yeah, John, and, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask this question. Um, on the loan from the connection fee, what is that at right now? I mean, what's the, uh, the amount doing, due on the connection side?
At this time, the sewer connection fee has been made whole from- At this time, the sewer connection fee has been made whole from the loans from the golf course. The only thing that was outstanding, to my, my understanding, the only thing that's outstanding at this point, is the purchase of the bus station property, which is about three point four million. And how that was handled is the sewer fund actually is the, now has the title deed, whatever you want to call it, of that property. So, the sewer fund has that, so we have a reserve and connection fee of cash plus land, the land being the bus station.
Okay, so what happens, though, when that three point four million is paid back? Would that allow for reduction in the fee?
Well, what would happen is, if the sewer fund was able to sell that property, they would sell that property, and whatever the proceeds would, would go back to the sewer fund. We, when we looked at the rate analysis, we were looking at a hundred and twenty million dollars of need in the next so many years, we would, we would, we looked at different scenarios, one being the forty million if we kept the rates the same, sixty million if we increased it to what it's been proposed, and is back before you today, or eighty million if we were to match the Washoe County rate. So, so none of the rate increases, we're going to get it to the hundred and twenty million in capital. So, you're talking about a one-time, say, three point four million dollars, that would come back to the sewer fund. It's also in the connection fee side, when we look at individual projects, we look at the amount that that project is for just straight replacement, which comes out of user fees, versus capacity increase. We're going to make the pipe bigger, because we have more flow, then those would come, a percentage of that would come out of the connection fee side, and this is the connection fee side that we're looking at.
Yeah, which is the three point four million.
Three point four million.
Is on the connection fee side. And then, I just want to make sure, and maybe this for the city attorney's office, is that if this moves forward today, can the money be transferred out of these funds for other purposes? In any circumstance?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we would have to talk with our finance department, especially given everything that's going on with the state, to be able to answer that. We can come back to you with that. I don't know if Mr. Chizum, Chizzle, excuse me, has some information on that.
Good afternoon, Robert Chizzle, Finance Director. It would have to come back to council as a medium-term obligation loan, and would have to have approval of the state to be able to loan money. Currently, it is prohibited to loan money from the sewer fund to, from the enterprise fund to the city general fund.
So, as I understood the comments before, there is no more loan between the city and, and, we, because we paid for it with the land, they now own the land.
That is correct.
Can I just follow up one more question on that, and is that what the state approved? Was an acceptable measure on that?
The state approved it, and there was also a statutory change that went through the last legislative session, that restricted inter-fund transfers.
Okay, but if, for the purposes of the connection, the connection side being made whole, that was an acceptable remedy that-
Yes, it was acceptable, and it was accepted by the Committee of Local Government Finance.
So, we don't have to sell the land over the next year or so?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Guston?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question out of kind of left field, but I, what, with the, the grease trap interceptors, can I ask a question on that? I'm reading this, it says a prohibition of using the hydro-mechanical grease interceptors is proposed, so what would be in place, what would, what would a restaurant that's grease trap, what would they use then?
What would typically happen is the, if there was a, they didn't have enough space, okay, there was some, some restriction that wouldn't allow for them to have a grease interceptor in place, there would be some allowances made. Some of those allowances could be a grease trap. The, the grease trap is not a great option, but, because what it requires is a fairly frequent removal, so your, your cost, what you kind of look at is the cost to put in the grease interceptor up front, or the cost of having, if you, if you had some restrictions, it wouldn't allow you to do that, doing the grease, the grease trap, but then having higher service frequencies, so your cost of the higher frequency of service, or frequencies go up.
My question is, we're prohibiting the use of the hydro-mechanical-
Right.
-interceptors.
So you-
So that requires that you'll have the trap, so you'll have more-
So, in those cases that, that no other solution would work, you'd probably be looking at a grease trap.
Well, I, I think a business needs to be informed of that, because that, you're right, because removal of that, unfortunately, is not a pleasant experience for people that might be in that restaurant or be around there, and I don't, you can't always do it after hours, that's, okay. I, I guess that's just a, when somebody applies, that must be made abundantly clear, is I guess what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair, entertain a motion. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Whoops.
Can I comment, please? Because I, I did talk about this before we went to recess, and I did meet with staff in the interim, and, and that's why I had that question, specifically if the connection fees were made whole on the separate enterprise account, and staff has assured me that it has been, and once that land's been sold, those proceeds will go back into that account. Also, we heard testimony today that these funds can't be used other than for the sewer, and I think based on the information and potential EPA violation for not fixing our sewer system, I'm going to go ahead and support the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam G three. Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam G three-one.
Ordinance number six-one nine-eight, an ordinance amending the Reno municipal code, Title twelve, Public Works and Utilities, Chapter twelve point oh eight, Street Excavations, Article two, Permit, Section twelve point oh eight point oh eight oh, fees to add a lateral connection inspection fee, and reference the fee schedule for, for current fees, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Chair, have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam G four. Chair, entertain a motion?
I'll move to adopt this portion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance, Adam G four-one.
This is ordinance number six-
Hold it, excuse me.
What kind of inspection are we going to do on these? I mean, what, what do we inspect? We're going to require them to run a camera down there, or what's going to happen?
For the record, Chair, Honey Public Works, we are actually going to run a camera down after these type of lateral rehabilitations. This is, this fee is for our own staff time that's required to run the camera down, inspect the video, and ensure that it was done in compliance with-
Because it says that they've been doing it improperly?
Yes, we have-
How often does that happen?
Well, at, at this point, we don't require a permit for this, which is what this allows, so we don't really know. We have had a number of backups as a result of improper installations, which is why we feel we need to require those.
Do the backups go into our line, it goes into the homeowner's house, correct?
It goes into the guy's house upstream. So, it, it, it would back up in our line, because of the, the protrusion would be in our line, in our main.
Oh, if they do it too far out, is that what the problem is?
Yes, that is what the problem is.
What I don't see here is, how do we go after the contractor to put that in? What happens if we find out they did that?
We would require them to fix it. What remedy we have with contractors is, we have code violations, and we also have the ability to not issue them any more permits.
Because all I see here is, we're going to charge the homeowner, or whoever, two-hundred and twenty-six dollars, but if it doesn't get done properly, I just want to make sure there's some, how we can find out, one contractor continues to do it wrong, can we revoke their permit, or how do we handle that, so that the next person doesn't get nailed?
We, we also do have, with every licensed bonded contractor, a five thousand dollar bond that we hold, so we could also go against the bond, we could have the, the situation fixed, and then we could charge the contractor back for that.
And have we done that? You said it's happened, you said it's happened before, have we gone after any of their bonds?
They've never had a permit for this before, because we've never required a permit for before, so they, the contractors who have done this previously may or may not be on our licensed bonded contractor list, may not have a permit and a bond within, with the city. So, now this will require that they do, so we will have that opportunity.
Move to adopt? Oh, she's got to read it first, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is ordinance number sixty-one ninety-nine, an ordinance amending the Reno municipal code, Title six, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter six point one one, Encroachment Permit, Section six point, six point one one point oh three oh, Application to Add Permit and Inspection Requirements for Sewer Lateral Rehabilitation, and Section six point one one point oh four oh, fees, require fees for sewer lateral rehabilitation inspections, and refer to the fee schedule for, for current fees, together with other matters property relating thereto. Move to adopt?
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. This time we'll go to resolutions. Adam H one.
Resolution number seven-six-one-seven, Resolution Granting Community Pride Grant Funds to Friends of the Washoe County Library, a five-oh-one C three nonprofit organization, to encourage literacy and foster lifelong learning for adults in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Chair, entertain a motion?
Move, move to, refer, uh, adopt.
Move to that, have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam H two.
Mr. Mayor, it's requested this one be opened and continued to August thirty-first.
Yes.
Move to continue.
Have a motion to continue, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam H three.
Resolution number seven-six-one-eight, Resolution Accepting Streets, Villages at Damone Ranch, Unit twenty B subdivision, portions of Lamore Lane and Colton Drive.
Have a motion and second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam H four.
Resolution number seven-six-one-nine, A Resolution Repealing Resolution Number seven-five-eight-zero, and Adopting a Revised Fee Schedule for the City of Reno, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve fiscal year, Effective August twenty-six, two thousand eleven.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam J, whoops, let's go down to Adam J three, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works, this action before you today is just authorization for staff to apply for a grant on behalf of the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee, and it's involving mapping and some signs tributaries.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Adam J, we'll go to Community Development. Yeah, Community Development. Adam J five, we have some people wish to speak. Mark Ray.
Mayor, we're going to set this up like a hearing, I, I guess the attorneys, I mean, do we have a time limit or anything, since this is appeal? Can we do that?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, yes, this is a hearing, and you would follow your hearing guidelines.
So, is it fifteen minutes each side, or?
That is correct.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Mark Ray, I'm an attorney here in town, and a member of Scenic Nevada. I speak here today because the matter on appeal was one that was never heard by Dick Legarza, the hearing officer, as you know. Mr. Legarza declined to hear the appeal of the sign on the corner of South Virginian, California Street, because he said that the organization and individual making the appeal, who are present here with you today, did not have standing, as in they were not aggrieved. And he made that finding at the request of your city attorney's office, who indicated, Mr. Mayor, that the organization and the person making the appeal were maybe interested in whether the sign was there in our neighborhood, but really didn't have any rights affected, they were not an aggrieved party. And I, I would like to offer some comments about that as relates to an aggrieved party and the issue of standing, because this matter was never heard on the merits, below. Scenic Nevada is an organization that represents people in close proximity to where this sign is located. One of those people is myself, with a law office at six-oh-eight Lander Street. I'm a member of Scenic Nevada, represented by that organization, and by the aggrieved party in this appeal. My office is about one block over and three blocks up from the sign. Peter Chase Newman is a member of Scenic Nevada. His office is approximately two blocks over and, and one block up from the proposed sign, or the sign that's in place now. Another business that is represented and a member of Scenic Nevada is the office of Jim Smith and Sue Smith, their office is at thirty-six Stewart Street. And that office is about a block from the proposed sign. Scenic Nevada's office is, is at three thirty-three Flint Street, which would be about two blocks over and three blocks up from the proposed sign. This area is a neighborhood, and we are a community within a neighborhood, who invested in this neighborhood, whose rights are very definitely personally, our property rights and our personal rights are aggrieved by this, because our businesses that we invested in, and the people that come to our businesses to have the opportunity to do business with us, are people who see this sign, which is an average, a mobile average, not a mobile, but a continuing changing TV-like advertising sign, which is in the California District of businesses that all of us have worked very hard together to keep within a conformity to the, the codes that exist there, and this one business, which is a non-conforming use for a non-conforming sign, is, is violating the, the spirit and the integrity of our neighborhood. I also wanted to mention to you, and I wanted to limit my comments to three minutes, that in the motion to dismiss Scenic Nevada's appeal, and, and the appeal of Ms. Breckus, the city attorney's office said that, in their brief, their motion, that a non, a non-conforming sign that requires repairs costing in excess of fifty percent of its replacement value shall be removed or made to comply with the provisions of this chapter, left out the words "and" title. So, any non-conforming sign, like the one we have here, which involves a non-conforming use on the property, which is an adult business by coincidence, but an advertising sign of this nature is non-conforming because of its size, because there's too many of them, and because it's too tall, those non-conforming things have to come in compliance, not merely with the chapter, but also with the Title eighteen, and all of the provisions of Title eighteen, which ask you as the, as the board, city council for our community, to look to the betterment of our community, and allow the people who live here to have a better quality of life, that's what the zoning ordinances and other ordinances and chapters found within Title eighteen speak to. So, the city attorney's office said, this is not a repair of a sign that costs more than fifty percent of its value, even though it was forty-eight thousand dollar expenditure for a pole sign, which of course, it was way more than fifty percent of its value, because they said, this, this sign was only repaired, it was, excuse me, only remodeled, not repaired. And that's the kind of denial of the spirit and intention of the law and the zoning ordinances that you can't tolerate, and you got to allow Scenic Nevada to have at least a standing to appeal and contest the merits of this issue. And I'd like to turn my time over to Jenny Breckus.
So, you have eleven minutes.
Your Honor, members of the council, the facts of this case are pretty straightforward, and what we know is that the, and it's a matter of interpretation related to a request to renovate, remodel, an existing sign at this business. And what we know is the record of decision that was entered by the planner who approved this decision, it came in the form of a building permit, wrote, quote, "The proposed non-conforming sign alteration is consistent with eighteen point one six per Claudia Hansen and Marilyn Craig." So, we know that there was interpretation that the sign was non-conforming. Now, we don't know why it was non-conforming, we've been trying to find out, we have some guesses ourselves. One is, it's non-conforming to face area, it's got too much face area, and it may be too tall, it may be an additional sign that's not even allowed, but those are some of the non-conformances that we are identifying. And we believe that the, the, a particular interest is the guiding intent of the non-conforming section of the code- of the non-conforming section of the code, which relates to all non-conformances. And a non-conformance is essentially something that's grandfathered, something that was allowed at one time, but is no longer allowed, most likely in these cases because of rezoning standards or uses. But the intent is that non-conforming uses are allowed to continue, but not encouraged to survive. The idea is that they're getting phased out. They're incompatible where they are. Just like you have an adult business in the middle of town, a sign that one time got put up, now a new sign of that nature is not allowed per the zoning district. So, that's what, that's kind of the setup of it. And what happened is, when you have a non-conforming sign, you read very specifically into the sign quote that says that, "No alteration can occur unless that alteration brings you in closer conformity to the regulations." Well, the changes, the alterations, did two things. It shrunk the face of the sign area. We don't know how much because there's a discrepancy on the permit. It was probably miniscule compared to the overall sign. Maybe two percent, maybe four percent, maybe staff will have a better count. But it wasn't that much. But it was going in the direction towards conformity because it was getting a sign that was too big, smaller. But the other change that was involved was changing the sign type. In the definition section, it says, you know, it lists all these different sign types, and it's, one of the sign types are changeable signs. And there's a sign type that is changed manually, and there's a sign type that's changed by computer-controlled, controlled by computers. They made that alteration. That alteration is not going in any direction toward any standard or regulation. It's just changing a type. It should not have been allowed. They can shrink it. They can go toward these standards, thresholds, but they can't change the type. That is a very clear reading of the ordinance. And so, that is what we are here appealing the decision for. Now, staff, in April, before we made our appeal, the manager's office said, you know, "We're getting a lot of calls about the stripper sign. Can you tell us a little bit about it?" And staff said, "It's an illuminated flashing sign. It's allowed." Well, that may be true, but staff did not tell you in their memo that it's a non-conforming sign and that the alterations are only allowed that go toward conformity with the standards and the thresholds. They clear that site. They build a new site today, new use today that's according to the zoning. They may very well get an illuminated, controlled, changing sign. But you're under the guise, basically, the snapshot in time that the non-conforming ordinances put you into, and that is what we are asking you to uphold. We're asking you to overturn this decision, and that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have seven minutes left. Do you have anybody you want to speak?
We have other individuals.
Laurie Ray's got, she's got an application and to speak. She won't get fifteen minutes, but she'll get the three.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add that one time before in the history of the City Attorney's Office issues with standing issues, that a case came up, which was, as you know, the Cold Springs case. The Cold Springs case in 2009 was one in which an organization of people in Cold Springs objected to the annexation of the neighboring property, which was sponsored by Mark Gunderson's client, a land developer. And the City Attorney's Office and this council took the position that they had no standing because they weren't the directly adjoining property owners, i.e., they didn't have a property right or personal right and interest. And the Supreme Court said, "That's not the way the law is supposed to be read as it relates to standing." So, I wanted you to notice that when the Supreme Court upheld the standing of the Cold Springs, the citizens for Cold Springs, they said, "This is a group of landowners and residents who live in close proximity to the subject land." They did not say that these people have to be next door. They did not say that these people's property values have to be directly affected. In fact, the Supreme Court said in this decision, which is a matter of record, that when a group like this is opposing a land use change or use of land that's being approved by the city, in that case, annexation, the fact that the proposed change may affect them in the future detrimentally, as in my law practice or Mr. Chase Newman's or the Smith's law practice and their ability, and our ability to maximize the use of our lands and our businesses, that's enough of a standing. You don't have to show, and it doesn't, and the city attorney can't come here and say that I have to show you I've lost a client or that somebody is offended enough not to come to my office because of the sign. A future harm adverse to my property and personal interest is enough, according to the Supreme Court. And they talk about that because it had been argued by the city and by Mr. Cadillac and, in particular, of course, Marilyn Craig, that that wasn't the law, and the Supreme Court said, "Yes, indeed it is." So, I want to make sure we get over this standing issue because to me, what the standing issue relates to the merits as well. Because the standing issue, as argued by the city, means if you're not aggrieved by the decision of the administrative officer, you can't argue against it. And the decision of the administrative officer can't be, it's a circular argument by the City Attorney's Office saying, "The administrative officer's decision was correct, and therefore, you're not aggrieved." Don't let that argument sway you or convince you that people in the neighborhood are not allowed to object to something that violates the law, that is not practiced by the other people in our neighborhood, in our business neighborhood. We don't have these kinds of signs. Nobody has these kinds of signs except these people. It's non-conforming. It's against the law. We should have the right to object to it.
Do you wish to use any more of your time, 4:32, or you're going to waive it?
Waive it.
All right. Thank you, sir. This time I'll call Laurie Ray up. Start her with three minutes.
Hi, my name is Laurie Ray, and I'm a member of Scenic Nevada. But more significantly, I'm a business owner in the community and in this neighborhood. And that's a picture of my property. My business is called LW Properties LLC. I own one property. That's it. I bought it in 2003, renovated, and now I lease it to my husband's business, which is the law offices of Mark Ray where I work. So, I'm in this neighborhood quite a bit. Five days a week, I go buy this sign, the Wild Orchid sign, or near to it. I'm here because I think the city's approval of the Wild Orchid sign was a mistake and the permit should not have been revoked. I mean, the permit should be revoked, excuse me. I'm in agreement with Scenic Nevada's position that it's a distracting sign to pedestrians and drivers, and it's garish, it's a garish digital display, which is not compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know if you can see it, but our sign on the law offices of Mark Ray is right about here. And it says, in a twelve-by-fifteen-inch sign, it says, "Law offices of Mark Ray, established 1996." That's how long we've been in this neighborhood, where we've leased other offices before we purchased that building and renovated it. It's a 1920-era arts and crafts home. It has a long chaps porch. And we worked really hard to be able to afford to buy that, and we invested a lot of money in the city of Reno, and we think it's worth it. We love Reno. What we're hoping for, our concern here is not only the objections of Scenic Nevada, but also that you look at this sign and think about, you know, is it going to bring blight to the area? We think that it might encourage blight, and we would hope that you would look at your own sign code where it says, in the purpose and scope and authority for the on-premise signs, if I could just read briefly, it says, "The purpose of this article is to promote the public health, safety, general welfare, and aesthetics by regulating and controlling the size, number, height, and location of on-premise signs. This chapter is designed to accomplish the following." And this is what it says in part, "To promote and maintain healthy commercial centers, eliminating wasteful and unsightly competition in signs. To encourage good sign design. To add to the quality of life by minimizing visual pollution. To attract and direct persons to various activities and enterprises. To protect and enhance the residential neighborhoods by prohibiting obtrusive and incompatible signs." So, we would hope that you would look at that and think about the Wild Orchid sign and see if it does fit the purpose. I don't think that it does. Also, to me, part of the issue is, do we, Reno citizens and business owners, do we have any community pride or not? I mean, I know I do, and I think my business reflects it, you know? And so, I think this digital sign is really just a tawdry example of Reno at its worst. So, I was hoping that you would please somehow find a way to hear Scenic Nevada's complaints. I don't know what the process should be, but ultimately to revoke the permit for this sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give you a minute.
I don't even need that.
Okay, you make them.
The written record shows, too, that Scenic Nevada believes that Section 18.16.803(b) "Related to a non-conforming sign that requires repairs costing in excess of fifty percent of its value shall be removed or made to comply with the provisions of this chapter and title." The administrative record is scant, but a $48,000 sign may very well exceed fifty percent of the replacement value of the existing sign. Secondly, and it's in the written record, the sign, both the replace tri-panel, that's still manually changed, and the other ones are advertising other businesses that are off-premise. And so, to some degree, the sign is also being used as an off-premise sign. And that's not the use for which it was originally permitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick? This would be for the city attorney. What are, what are we deciding on today? Are we just deciding on the administrator's decision that they're aggrieved or not aggrieved? And then, does it go back to them if we decide to overturn his decision?
No. Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, you're deciding two, actually, three decisions today. Number one, whether Scenic Nevada is aggrieved. Number two, whether Jenny Brekis, on an individual basis, is aggrieved. And number three, if you find that Scenic Nevada is not, is aggrieved, then the merits of the case. The merits of the case have to do with an application to change the structural aspects of the sign and whether that complies with the law. You've heard a lot of other information, but that's, that's the nub. That's the issue.
Good. Kami, you brought, you don't want to speak, but we'll call on you if we have a question of you. All right. Mark Thurman, you have fifteen minutes, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I want to talk about the standing issue. The NRS 2783195.
Please, excuse me, identify yourself.
Oh, Mark Thurman, attorney for the, for the Wild Orchid.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The, the code section they cite specifically lists people who can file an appeal of an administrator's decision. And there are, there's the mayor, the city council, and then there are people who are aggrieved. And the reason it doesn't say just anybody can appeal, or an appeal is, but it limits it to two types of non-aggrieved people and just the aggrieved people. It's not everybody down the street or around the corner. Make a big deal about how they have to walk past the sign. If you drive in from California, you have to drive past the sign. That doesn't make you an aggrieved person. They're talking about houses, and if you look at the permit on, in the record for the sign, there's nobody who can see that sign from their house. It's, the sign is on the corner of Virginia and California. They're talking about houses that would have to see through buildings and around corners to even see the sign, and then they would only see probably the back of the sign. So, there's no aggrieved party because there's nobody being harmed. You can say that this has effects across the community. You can say a sign in Las Vegas is an aggrieved, we're aggrieved party too because, after all, we don't, we have to drive there once in a while. They're not an aggrieved party, and they don't have standing because they're not neighbors. They don't visually see the sign. They're not impacted. They're, we're talking about comparing Virginia Street, which is a commercial street, with some residential neighborhood that's being used commercially. Whether or not that sign got a permit or not, we don't know. It's apples and oranges. So, they don't have standing because they're not aggrieved. And they're not aggrieved because they don't have any harm to them. And the reason they don't have any harm to them is they're too far away for them to see the content or see the sign itself. What they are saying is they don't like the sign because it's, it's, it's the content. They talked about the TV-type sign. Well, that fact is, the content on that sign is, it does show on TV. It's Kami's old ads for the Spice House and other places cut up into little segments. So, it's G or PG rated anyway because it wouldn't get on TV if it was otherwise. So, there's no content issue. This is Reno. This is downtown Reno, and this is, this was not a repair to the sign. This was a smaller sign put in the space of a larger sign. That's a ministerial act. The hearing officer basically said, "Look, if you can get a permit for it, it's a ministerial act. It doesn't require a hearing. It doesn't require erection of a new sign. It doesn't require the process for a new non-conforming use." When the, when the permit said non-conforming, they were talking about the old sign being replaced by a new non-conforming sign. Both are non-conforming, but the old sign is the non-conforming part, and it's non-conforming to the general regulations that are in effect now. And finally, on the issue of standing, you just won a case, I guess, a week ago in federal court, Huron versus City of Reno, on the issue of standing. And what that was, was the city was, was being opposed in its sign regulations by somebody who didn't get a permit and was complaining about the permit process. They didn't go down physically and get a permit. The same thing. There's no nexus. He wasn't a general citizen who can complain about how difficult it is to get a permit by not applying for a permit. In this case, we have the general citizenry somewhere out there, not a very large sample, complaining about something that's, you know, far away, and they haven't even, they don't, they're not next to it. They're not affected by it. And therefore, for the same reasons that Judge Hicks dismissed the case against you, you should dismiss this on appeal. Any questions?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Frazek?
Did you make this, this, your case you just made to us in front of the hearing officer?
No, the case we made, we filed the brief in front of the hearing officer, which had this stuff in there. One thing I want to add, just for the record, I, there was an issue about the complaint on the, on the notice of appeal by the city, which I'm sure Marilyn's going to go into more detail. Would somebody please include, council, will you please include real party and interest in service sheets? We're not getting your service from you. The appeal, the appeal that was filed had no service on us. We didn't get service on it. So, we need to be included on our service sheet. And that, for that reason, the appeal's effective.
That's not theirs. We will.
You're bringing up my question and my concern right now. It looks to me from the staff report that the City of Reno filed the brief saying that they're not aggrieved. Not you. So, it shouldn't be you having to make the case that they're not aggrieved. It should be the City of Reno.
Well, we're, we're a real party of interest.
Well, that would be after we find them aggrieved or not aggrieved.
Well, we went to the hearing.
I understand you went, so.
And we joined in the city's brief at the hearing.
That's what I asked.
Okay, yes. We have a joiner in the city's brief. We joined in the city's brief at the hearing. So, yeah, we raised those issues on, in the, in the hearing too. And there was a brief by, by the Scenic Reno, Scenic Nevada, to, in the hearing record too. So, that's in the record.
I'm just trying, there's two different things here. Whether they're aggrieved, and if we find they're aggrieved, then the other issue, so.
Right. And frankly, I don't think you can, I don't think you should find they're aggrieved. But if you do find they're, you know, you know how you can tell they're not aggrieved? You look at the, at the map, which is what the city planning official did. Look at the, at the map, and you look at where the sign is, and you look at the cross streets, and you look at who sees the sign. That's how you know whether they're aggrieved or not, and none of the people here live or work in those buildings.
So, you're saying this sign is only to be seen from the people who are within a hundred yards? It's not to be seen by people passing by?
No, but I'm saying is that the constitutional limits on aggrieved parties, like Sierra Club and all that, have to do with people who can say that they regularly use and are offended by, and they have to go, and they have, and they have some kind of nexus or connection. This group, this group is representing people in a far-off neighborhood who don't have a connection with, with that, with that sign. That's all.
Okay.
Any other questions for the council?
You have, any other question, Mr. Frazek?
I guess a question for the attorneys, just from my recollection.
Let me clarify one thing. Sir, you've got nine minutes left. Do you have anything else you want to say now before we open this up to questions and stuff?
Well, I thought the city attorney was going to present, actually, because it's.
They're part of the fifteen minutes, right?
What? Forty, fifteen minutes?
They're part of his fifteen. We're part of his fifteen minutes.
Okay. We'll have her present now.
I'm sorry, did I?
You, we'll get to you in a minute.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. What we are going to recommend at this point, since you have heard considerable material from Scenic Nevada and from Ms. Brekis about the merits of the case, I'm going to ask Claudia Hansen, the planning manager, if she will explain the appeal that was filed in this case and how she decided it and why. And then, we will come back at some point and determine whether they're standing and if so, for Scenic Nevada, the merits of the case.
Can I get you over? Good afternoon, once again, Claudia Hansen, planning manager.
Start the clock. Well, now, this is staff's report.
That's fine. It can, it can be part of the same, same issue, or same timing. Second of focus.
Go ahead.
To familiarize the location, this is the Wild Orchid facility. California Avenue is right here, and Virginia Street is right here. The sign is located right on the corner. There's a Starbucks right here across the street. The applicant applied for the building permit last December, I believe it was, December 8th of 2010. And prior to the application, I did meet with Mr. Cashmerry out on the site to discuss his plans on, for a new sign on the location, or a modification to his existing sign on the location. I explained to him at that time that the LED screen would not be able to be oriented towards California Avenue. The code requires that it's only oriented to Virginia Street in this area. So, you'll notice on the sign that there's no LED sign on the California facing, on the California face. It is a three-sided sign. Ooh, that hurts my eyes. This is the... I guess that's good enough. This is the side that faces California Avenue. There's no LED screen on that side. These two signs were, and this was always a triangle sign, there were always three faces to it. They changed these two signs out to add the LED sign. LED signs on that side, on the side, the other one did not have LED added. With that change, the square footage of the sign was reduced. It's currently a nonconforming because of its size. They're allowed to have 125 square feet for that sign, and they're, before the change, it was at 167 square feet. So, they reduced it. And Ms. Brekis did mention that there was a discrepancy on the permit. They listed that it was reduced by 4.81 square feet. That was per side, so it was actually twice that. It was a 9.6 reduction, I believe, 9.6 square feet reduction. And I supported the proposed changes to the sign per 18.16.804, which addresses the alteration, enlargement, or relocation of signs, which states that no permit shall be issued for the alteration, enlargement, or relocation of a nonconforming sign unless the changes will increase the level of conformance with the provisions of this chapter and title. So, in that, the LED is allowed, the changeable letters were allowed, both of those were allowed. They were bringing the square footage closer into conformance. I told them that they needed, if they were changing out the sign or altering the sign, that they would have to bring it closer into conformance, as stated in 1816.804. So, with the reduction of the square footage, that was bringing it closer into conformance, closer to the 125 square feet that is allowed in that area. So, we did allow the sign to be constructed. Following that, it was appealed by Scenic Nevada, once the sign went up, which would be when, obviously, they became aware of it. They wouldn't know about when the building permit came through, so we allowed an appeal process 10 days after it was constructed. And then it was appealed and was brought before the hearing officer, who, I don't know if Marilyn wants to jump in on, at this point, on the...
Marilyn Craig, again, yes, the case was heard by the hearing officer. The first question that he addressed was standing. He found that Scenic Nevada did not have standing at that point. That was the end of that hearing, because there is appeal allowed to this body from the hearing officer decision, and you decide the decision, the questions anew. So, while you can take into consideration his decision, it is not binding on you. And so, they, Scenic Nevada appealed, also Jenny Brekis as an individual appealed, and so that brought us here today. With respect to the appeal by Scenic Nevada, Jenny Brekis certainly can represent them and has done so, and of course, their attorney, and anyone else who wishes to appeal or speak on their behalf may speak in accordance with that. With respect to Ms. Brekis, she did not appeal the administrator's decision. She started her appeal only at the appellate level. Therefore, she's not eligible to be an appellate at that time, because you have to start by appealing the administrator's decision and be heard by the hearing officer. So, and then finally, there was reference made to a decision about Cold Springs. That type of standing is different from the type of standing that is required by state law for this kind of case. This kind of case requires a specific personal harm being done, so... And then, and just wrapping up here a little bit, with respect to the administrative decision, if you do find that Scenic Nevada is in fact aggrieved, then with respect to the merits of it, the decision itself dealt with the structural aspects of the sign and not the content of the sign. Those issues are unrelated to what the planning manager was making her decision about. She looked only at structural, and that's the appeal that's before you today. If the sign is offensive, and it can be offensive, content can be offensive, it can, if it's illegal, then that's another issue. That's not before you today. So, the content is not before you. It is strictly, did the planning manager comply with the ordinances regarding the structural changes that she allowed? And then I'll see, I think there might be one other.
Yeah, basically, the sign is benign, and if they don't, if they have a problem with the content, they can go to court, and, you know, they can sue us as a nuisance or whatever, but that's not really to be discussed here. And that wasn't the issue that should be before you, because then you're going to make judgments on what's good taste and what's bad taste, and it's First Amendment protected. And commercial free speech, there is commercial free speech.
Any question? All right, thank you. I had closed the public comment section, but we do have one person that I've overlooked. Sue Smith, I'm going to give you two minutes, since you turned it in after we'd closed public comment.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I thought it had already been. I would like to differ. My husband and I own a building at 36 Stewart Street. I think you're familiar with it, because we got a historic award for that building. On the corner, across from Old City Hall, Stewart Street and Center Street. From my husband's office, he in fact can see the sign. So, I would say, and I am a member of Scenic Nevada, so that argument, I think, doesn't necessarily hold water. My neighbor, the children's museum, is about to open. Certainly, we're seeing some aspects of the neighborhood that are coming forward. It's extremely disappointing to see a furtherance of a nonconforming use such as this be allowed to further their nonconforming use. I'm not exactly sure how to use this, but I wanted to show you...
You just put it down, she'll dial it in.
Upside-down, downside, upside-down?
Just like you're reading it, sir.
Like I'm reading it?
Just like you're reading it.
Okay. I want to show you what the ponderosa originally looked like, and I'm wondering how we got from this to what we currently have there. And I don't know, but I can tell you that the whole thing is nonconforming, and to allow a sign that now not only advertises itself, but it advertises other properties throughout the community that apparently are owned by this same owner, doesn't seem right. And I guess to further that discussion, it's my understanding that there were many calls received by City Hall of people who didn't like the sign when it came, when it was put up. And none of us knew that it was coming. How could we have appealed or been a party to the decision if we didn't get notice until we saw it up? And I'd like to point out that, you know, one of the problems that we're having is there's a 22% vacancy rate in downtown Reno. I don't know how something like this, the nonconforming sign, and the reason that it's nonconforming is that it's a second sign. They're only allowed to have one sign. This sign that you see there was transferred, and this is their second sign.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Do I get to reply?
You have two minutes, three minutes left on your time.
As you can see from that picture, nowhere looks like what the ponderosa looks like today. I mean, there's no, already, it has one electronic sign on the corner there that's not in contest. Second thing is, this sign replaced an existing sign that wasn't shown on that picture. It replaced an existing sign that had the same kind of content, advertised the same kind of things, and what they're complaining about, they say off-premise advertising. Well, then, they go file a complaint, and the city will cite us for off-premise advertising. In reality, it's not off-premise, because Mr. Cashmerry owns other clubs, and he has a bundle called the pleasure pass, and he advertises the pleasure pass. So, if you're going to say that a supermarket can't advertise Coca-Cola because Coca-Cola is off-premise, then your regulation makes sense. Otherwise, he's allowed, because he owns all three, because he's bundling and he sells the pleasure pass there, to advertise what he mentioned in the other club as part of the pleasure pass package. And that's all he does. That's the off-premise argument. It's not off-premise, because it's sold right there. It may be that you can go and use it at other facilities, but it's sold there. So, I think you just ought to, we ought to just uphold the hearing officer's decision, both on the merits and on the standing issue. And thank you very much.
Okay, you have a minute, 50 seconds. So, if you want any more, you're going to wave them.
I'll...
Come on up, come on up to the microphone and wave them.
All right, wave them.
You're going to give them to Marilyn?
Yeah, give them to Marilyn.
Okay.
The only thing I wanted to tell you is that the code allows an on-premise sign to have 20% off-premises advertising on it. So, that's why that is allowed. And we're completely away from the decision that the planning manager made with respect to the structural changes. But since it had been brought up, I wanted to provide you that piece of information.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'm going to bring it back to the table for discussion. Mr. Aziz?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we have a pretty good policy here. I don't see why they're not an aggrieved party, to be honest. I mean, the argument is that it's a benign sign, and that no one sees it, is the whole purpose of, and why put a sign up? I mean, it's there for people to see, and people drive by it, and there's people enough there. So, I think that they are an aggrieved party, and I'll make that motion. And I'll second.
Wait a minute. Mr., have a motion and second, but Mr. Hesch.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand the logic behind, this is for Marilyn. You said if we find that scenic is aggrieved, then we hear the merits of the case.
Correct.
But if we find Jenny aggrieved, we don't hear the merits of the case?
No, you would then hear the merits with respect to her appeal. So, there are, right now, there's the Scenic Nevada appeal, then there is the individual appeal by Jenny Brekis.
And Jenny wasn't the original appellant at the administrative decision? She only appealed this case to us.
Right, right.
Okay. And then what stops, if we were to dismiss this or uphold the dismissal, what stops the property owner like Sue Smith for filing another objection?
Well, the time has passed to file an appeal with respect to the structural changes that were made.
The administrator's decision?
The administrator's decision. That's a defined appeal period. Now, if there's something on the sign that is currently happening, then someone can come in and certainly file a complaint, and that would go to the enforcement officers. But the structural changes that were allowed by the planning manager, that appeal period has ended.
Okay.
And one more time, just before, Marilyn, the standard for aggrieved is different here. And what was that again?
The standard for aggrieved on this kind of appeal is that they show harm. It has to be personal harm, harm to themselves. They have to show injury, they have to show causation and redressability.
Thank you.
Your motion again one time for me.
That Scenic Nevada isn't an aggrieved party.
Isn't or is?
Is.
Is. Ms. Surazic.
Marilyn, I do have a question in relevance to this, because, and I can't remember, I don't know if we have a picture, what the exist, or the previous sign was that this one replaced. Does anyone, if I recall correctly, it didn't have flashing, it wasn't digital, wasn't it just a, like a diamond-shaped sign with like pink, and I can't remember?
I, I don't have a photo of it, but it was the type where you, where somebody goes up and changes the letters by hand.
The letter.
So, to me, I could make the case that Scenic Nevada is aggrieved, because now you have a flashing sign there with the digital aspect of this sign, which I think changes the whole scope of what was existing there already.
But that wasn't what the sign application was about. And we'll ask Claudia if she made a decision and allowed digital or some other system of lighting as opposed to what it was before. So, that would, I'll ask her.
It was, it is a different form of lighting. It's now an LED sign, but both are allowed by code in this area.
I think Claudia handled it under our procedures and stuff like this. Whether somebody likes the content, you did approve the sign to be built like it is and stuff like that. It did reduce the sign. Now, what, so we're trying to decide if Scenic Nevada is aggrieved?
Right. There's two things we have to decide, Mr. Mayor. Is there an aggrieved party? And after that, what happens after that?
Okay, now, how is Scenic Nevada aggrieved party?
Well, that's sort of the question I was, when I look at the City of Reno's motion to dismiss, I don't see anything in here about they have to personally be hurt. It says, "The mayor, or any member of the city council, or any person or entity aggrieved by his or her or its inability to obtain a building permit, or by a decision made by an administrative officer, may appeal such decision to the hearing examiner." It doesn't say they have to be personally hurt, harmed.
No.
So, it looks like anybody can appeal.
I'd like to hear her answer to that, because I...
So, anybody driving down the street...
Because I'm having a hard time determining that they're aggrieved.
I do, too.
I understand. I'm looking at what our motion to dismiss says, and I don't see where it says that they're not aggrieved.
The word aggrieved is a legal term, and it is defined by state law, and it's defined by case law, and it means that you have to show a personal harm. That's what the word aggrieved means.
But an entity can also say a personal harm, correct?
Oh, absolutely. An entity can have a personal harm. Oh, yes. It doesn't have to be an individual harm. It can be a harm to the property or to the entity itself, certainly.
Does it only have to be a financial harm?
No, no.
So, someone's emotional state is not up to us to decide, is it?
No, but to show, I mean, if you want to say that you're emotionally destroyed by something, well, then you have to persuade the trier of fact yourself.
That's what I'm trying to say. So, it's not there that it has to be, they're trying to make the case they are harmed. They don't like it, they don't, whether it's content or whatever, and I'm not here to look at the content, but they feel that that's why they're harmed, then how can I say they're not harmed? I mean, they're the ones saying they're harmed.
Well, it's not what they say, it's what you determine, if they're harmed or not. They say they're harmed.
So, tell me what's the case again for them not being harmed? They're not proximity?
No, no, that they have not shown that they are personally harmed. What has this sign, what does allowing the smallness, the decrease in size of the sign, how does that harm Scenic Nevada?
And they're saying it's because of the flashing lights and the change. Who has the burden of proof to show they're aggrieved? Is it, the city has to prove they're not aggrieved, or do they have to prove they are?
They have to prove they are aggrieved.
And so, just the flashing light and the change in LED from static to that is where they're saying they're harmed.
They're saying they're harmed, but either is allowed under the code. It's not the decision that the planning management...
That's the second step, is whether they're aggrieved or not doesn't mean whether they, that's the second step about whether they're aggrieved or not. They could be aggrieved over something that's entirely legal, but that's not what's being in front of us right now. It's whether they're aggrieved or not.
That's a determination for you to make. If you decide that they're aggrieved, then by all means, you hear the case.
So, they can be aggrieved because the sign is smaller and we allowed the sign, not the content?
Well, I don't see how they can be aggrieved if the sign is smaller.
I can't either.
I just don't see the personal harm. I don't see the personal harm.
I don't either.
Well, I'm going to support Councilman Aziz's motion, because, in my opinion, just the name itself, Scenic Nevada, they're talking about upholding standards that they have set, that they think are relevant to the Scenic Nevada. And so, to me, it's a conflict of their name, and I think they have the right to try to prove their case.
Well, I think they ought to go to a lawsuit if they're going to do that.
Well, it's going to wind up there no matter what.
Huh?
It's going to wind up there no matter what, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the motion too. Now, is it true staff that Scenic Nevada's office is one block over? Was it one block over, three, one block up, three, no, just one block up, three blocks over? I thought it was one and three.
It's one block over.
Come to the microphone, please. Come to the microphone.
That's my fault, Bob.
It's on the corner of Liberty and Flint, 330, 3 Flint, so that would be one block over and three blocks up for their office.
Okay.
So you go up Flint Street to get to your office? You do go California sometimes.
Yes, sir. Yes, I do. As a matter of fact, I went by it to get to you today. And I also, every time I go to court and every time my wife and I go to the bank, we go by there many times a day, but it's not just that we go by it, it's that it's in our proximity. I wanted to add, could I just say, the definition of aggrieved person found in your ordinance is an aggrieved person, which means any government entity, individual firm, association, club, organization, corporation. Any aggrieved, an aggrieved person is one whose personal right or right of property is adversely and substantially affected by the action of a discretionary body. Meaning, the approval of this new sign, remodeled sign, did that adversely and substantially affect our organization and its members who are in proximity to the sign?
So you're saying, you're saying the sign affected you because it's smaller and it's the same dimensions?
No, I, no I'm not.
But you're saying the contents affected you?
I'm saying the decision, the action of the discretionary body, which in this case is Dick LaGarza, who heard the appeal to, from the city staff, which is how this thing started, that action in approving this sign substantially and adversely affected the organization of which I'm a member and me personally, as is in my proximity, as well as Mr. Newman's, Ms. Smith's, the office of our organization itself, yes. I'm saying that.
Okay, thank you very much. Legal counsel, you had something.
You asked what section of the code limited the aggrieved to the, to the person with physical harm or actual harm as opposed to some broader constitutional Sierra Club-type thing. He just read it. That's the section. We were all looking for it.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. I will not be supporting the motion because I can't find it where they're aggrieved person because they made the sign smaller or they instructed, they installed the sign. I just can't make it. Mr. Deutsch?
I won't support the motion either, that's right.
All right.
I'm going to support the motion and you're talking about making the sign smaller. Wow, they made it nine feet smaller.
Well, that's a lot.
No, not 167, 167, 158?
Okay, Mr.?
Obviously, I made the motion to support it, but to me, it's, the argument is analogous to, I'm thinking of a group that's like PETA, who goes in because someone puts up a billboard saying slaughter all the animals you want to slaughter. They're aggrieved because that's what their organization is opposed to. That's what makes them aggrieved, similar to what Mr. Guston said. Their organization is harmed because that's what their whole rationale for being is fighting that. And that's what Scenic Nevada does. So they're not, I don't think they're harmed in a financial area. I think that this is what the group is formed to oppose.
Okay. Ms. Frazee, you had something?
Yeah, I'm going to support it. I do think they're aggrieved because the simple fact that they changed the sign to a digital sign, a digital flashing sign. We've had these issues in other areas of the city and I believe that right there, Mr. Mayor, makes them aggrieved party.
Okay. Ms. Hesch, have you had something?
No, I think Scenic Nevada's property is close enough that you can make the argument that the rights and property are adversely and substantially affected. So.
And that's exactly why I seconded the motion. That's exactly why I seconded the motion.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote five, two.
Now, Mr. Mayor, the second part, I don't know why we don't have a third option and now is send it back to the hearing officer to hear this. He never heard the case.
I agree. I don't know why we should hear it. I think we remanded back.
I think we should send it back to the hearing officer.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, if you could neck, you took Scenic Nevada, but if you could take up the issue as aggrieved as to Jenny Breckus, that would be the next step in your decision-making.
And my problem with that one was she wasn't there, so I need some clarification on that. She wasn't there at the start and I don't know what the issues would be different from her. So if the city can tell me what, didn't, sorry, didn't her time expire to make, to actually file an appeal?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, there was a definite timeline to file an appeal from the administrator's decision. She did not file that appeal. What she's done is tried to appeal in the middle of the process, going up the chain from our hearing officer's decision.
But she appealed the hearing officer's decision based on the aggrieved party, so we've just made that null and void.
Yeah, but what you would do is you would wipe out your statute of limitation at the administrative level if you allow people to interlope into the process.
And that's what I was getting to also. Should I make a finding, she's not aggrieved? I mean, she is aggrieved, she's not aggrieved?
This finding is up to the council. I believe the factors are before you on whether she is aggrieved, but whether she's properly even an appellant is the question as well. And that goes into whether there's, she's aggrieved.
So she didn't file in the timeline?
Tracy Chase, they can confirm that. That's my knowledge. Is that correct, Marilyn? She did not file from the administrator's decision?
She did not file an appeal from the administrator's decision. Let me read you what your code says. And you've already heard the first part of it. That has been read to you, that you must make your appeal within 10 days of the time that the decision is made. In this case, I do think that there was some leeway given to Scenic Nevada because there was a concern that they hadn't been informed of it in a timely fashion. So I think there was additional time given to them in order to appeal. But then it says after that, any other aggrieved person may file a subsequent appeal within the time allotted for appeals within payment of fees. Any subsequent appeal will not affect the date on which the hearing examiner or Board of Appeals hears the appeal. And so it's basically saying that any other aggrieved person may file a subsequent appeal within the time allotted. But in this case, she did not file within the time allotted, so she's not an eligible appellant at this point. She certainly can represent Scenic Nevada and speak on their behalf.
And if I could read in the record, Mr. Mayor, the, in our staff report, it has the appeal and it says that the appeal was, oh, the council hearing, it was 8/24/11. The appeal was on June 14th of 2011? And that its administrative decision was made in December of 2010?
It would be, once again, Claudia Hansen, planning manager. We allowed 10 days after the sign went up because when I...
And what day did the sign go up then?
Oh...
Was it in June?
It was June, yeah. I don't have the specific date of when it lit up, but I spoke to, it may have been Lori right after it went up, I can't remember, somebody from Scenic Nevada about when it went up and they informed me that they wanted to appeal it. And so we allowed it from when the sign went up because there wasn't, when I approve a building permit, there's not really notice to anybody other than the applicant.
So it's possible she did appeal within 10 days? If she appealed on June 14th?
No, she appealed following the hearing officer.
Oh, okay. I'm reading the wrong thing. This evidence presented at the underlying hearing on June 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have a date on here. Says, oh, June 23rd. I'm sorry, the county, the city clerk has a stamp on there of June 23rd, which was nine days after even the evidence at the hearing officer.
Correct, it was following the hearing officer.
So how many days does someone have to appeal the hearing officer's decision?
It would be 10 days as well.
Okay. And Jenny did, but Scenic Nevada didn't?
No, I believe they're both on there for the hearing officer. For my decision on the, on the construction of the sign, it was just Scenic Nevada.
Okay. So the appellant to the hearing officer of your decision was Scenic Nevada only?
The appellant of the hearing officer.
Yeah, who appealed your decision?
My decision was Scenic Nevada.
Okay. And then after the hearing officer made his decision, then who appealed it from the hearing officer to hear? I just saw Jenny's signature.
It's listed as Scenic Nevada and Jenny Breckus.
Okay. So really, Scenic Nevada appealed both your decision and the hearing officer's decision?
Correct.
So I'm struggling now with, if Scenic Nevada is the appellant, what I heard was something different. If Scenic Nevada was the appellant in both cases, why doesn't the standing decision we just made sufficient?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, you're dealing with an entity versus an individual. Right before you are two appellants, Jenny Breckus and Scenic Nevada. So you have to determine if one is aggrieved or both are aggrieved. Jenny Breckus would still have the ability to put forward her comments through Scenic Nevada as a member, but it wouldn't be another individual right to appeal.
Well, if we need, if the attorney needs one, I'll make the motion to, to find that Jenny Breckus, I don't know if she's aggrieved or not, but she doesn't have the right to appeal is what you're saying. So it doesn't matter if we say she's aggrieved or not, is she's not an appellant in this case.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's, this council has the ability to determine if their appeal is properly before you.
Okay. And I'll move that that appeal is not properly before us because of timing issues.
I agree. Second.
Motion and second and discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other motions we need on this?
Well, now could I just move to send it back to the hearing officer?
May I be heard once again? Your code says that after public hearing, after the appeal has been filed, it comes up, then the city council shall hear de novo the decision of the planning, or the planning commissioner, whomever it's coming up from. So you are hearing the whole thing de novo. Since you have found Scenic Nevada aggrieved, it is now time to move on to the merits and make a determination on the merits.
But the hearing officer did not hear this portion.
No, that's right.
So it's not, so de novo means, I should see we could send it back. We heard the appeal, the appeal was on whether they had standing or not, whether they were aggrieved. We heard that appeal. Now it would go back for them to hear it, for the hearing officer to hear the merits of the case. I have no idea, but that's what, the way the process is supposed to work. I mean, if we're going to do this, why have a hearing officer?
She's saying that the process is written down the way it is and we're supposed to hear it. If we send it back, he's going to hear it and it's going to come back to us either way.
Yeah, but we don't know what he's going to say. That's why we have the hearing officer. He may, I don't know what he's going to say.
I'll recognize you and then I'll recognize you.
Mark Therman again. I, we're in this administrative process as opposed to legislative process and you asked about a motion. The motion should be, the appeal's being dismissed because they didn't appeal within 10 days of the sign permit issuing. Mr. Kajmeri went to a great deal of expense to buy that sign based upon an issued permit. He didn't, he didn't, he was fooled into believing...
We're not hearing those merits right now.
Well, it's a 10-day rule. You asked for, you want de novo and put it on the record. It's, you know, there's a 10-day rule from the permit issuing. That gives notice by law to everybody.
What you have here is a situation very much similar to what the Nevada Supreme Court, if you were the court, would be a de novo review situation on a motion for summary judgment or dismissal whereby only one issue is addressed, the de novo review is of that issue. You have no de novo review, no administrative record to review, none. So the only appropriate thing the court would say, we are overruling or overturning the motion for summary judgment that was granted by the hearing officer, if you will, or dismissal by the hearing officer, reversing that. The hearing administrative record must proceed before you can have an administrative review. How can you have a review of something that didn't happen? So you have to remand it.
And I also see no harm on sort of either side here because the sign's up. So the applicant isn't being harmed.
I mean, I'm prepared either way. I'm prepared to hear it and make a decision or send it back. I mean, I don't know what good it does to send it back if we've got the authority to move forward. I don't know what that does for us, but...
Marilyn, does it say we must hear it if we overrule? I didn't hear, I didn't see that in the language that you read to us because in the ordinary course, we would send it back.
It doesn't say you must hear it. It doesn't say that. It says shall hear de novo the decision.
The decision of the administrative officer.
Yeah, right, the hearing officer.
Hearing officer.
Yeah.
Well, if you make a motion, send it back, I'll support it.
I didn't make that motion and you did send it.
That's a motion, do I have a second?
Exactly.
Have a second and discussion.
I'm going to support the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Before we hear the J6, the city manager's thing, we're going to have to go back to E... Wait a minute, what is it? No, it's E13.
Good afternoon, for the record, Maureen McKissick. The item before you today was referred by the Shared Services Committee. They heard this on August 15th and they unanimously approved sending it back to each jurisdiction for approval. So it went to Sparks on Monday, the county yesterday, they did approve it. It's before you today. We're seeking approval of three things at this time. First, an extension to the existing cooperative agreement until the end of January, and I have to read into the record at this point a modification. The Sparks budget is not 87,000, it is 84,976. Two, we need you to approve the conceptual plan to move forward. And three, we need you to appoint one member and one alternate. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Frazin.
Yeah, just a question, maybe it's for you, Mr. Mayor, or Maureen, what is the funding structure now as far as percentage of contribution?
The funding for the next year is the same as it was for the current year, where we have one cent equivalent from Washoe County, one half-cent equivalent from Reno, one half-cent equivalent from Sparks.
Okay, so everyone's contributing their fair, I mean, has staff done that analysis?
That is the basis and that is in place.
Okay.
And then, yes, sir.
Do you in favor of this, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Sir?
You like this plan?
Yes, from what I've seen of everything set up so far, I really...
And your representative?
Yes. She will be in a minute.
I do like the plan, the way it's set up, and I think it's going to make it for better negotiations and everything. And Mr. Klinger has been involved with staff and everything and I think it's going to make things a little better.
Move to approve?
It's Mr. Deutsch's territory.
Well, there's an alternate, there's a person and an alternate.
We're going to do the alternate, but I'm just approving the staff recommendation, not the subcommittee. I don't know if you want to do them separately?
I'll defer to the city attorney. I think we do need to have a separate motion for each item.
Have a motion, motion and a second for the organization, is that right?
Yeah, for the, this is E13, right? The Amendment four. So this is like the first one, this is E13I.
E13I is the approval of the extension of the cooperative agreement. Correct. With the modification to the Sparks budget.
Correct.
So that's a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Then I'll move to approve the conceptual plan and timeline.
Have a motion, second. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
On the, on the third one, Dwight, do you wanna be on the board or you guys can fight it over?
I'll be in primary.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodman, Jody Roll, would you come to the podium a minute?
Yes, sir.
There is a vicious rumor, there is a vicious rumor that you are departing our company.
That is true, Mr. Mayor.
And when will be your last day?
My last day is September 2nd. I'll be before you next week with the number of closeout items, so I was waiting.
Oh, so you will be with us next week when we do this?
Yes.
Well, then I'll save all of what I have to say about you until then.
Thank you.
And I think the council will too, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
While we're here on this item, let's go to, I don't remember the E number, E, E 1, staff's E 1, D 1, the mart and the 7/11, and the chocolate bar. Staff has those answers for us now.
Yes, sir. Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. On, the question was on the hours of operation on E 1, D 1 versus D 5. The Smart Gas and Convenience Store, this is, these are change of ownership, so when it was, the previous owner ran the business from 6 to 11. So they did not have 24-hour operation at that time. The other one, the 7/11, has been operating 24 hours for a number of years, and so it's already established in that area. So if the Smart Gas and Convenience wanted to have the 24 hours, they would have to come forward with a special use permit. Correct.
And then would that be an expansion under the neighborhood plan of alcohol then?
No.
Since they're already limited?
No, it's, that's for new licenses only. So they already have the, there's already a license on that property.
But that would be a new license to extend the hours?
No, that wouldn't be a license. That would just be the special use permit to expand the hours.
Okay.
It's, it's still the same license. And then, I'm sorry, if you're, should we move on to the next one? The chocolate bar was the other question, I believe, F 2, and I was out trying to look up the other ones while this one came up, so if anyone wants to direct what your question was. But this one did receive a special use permit when Divine Lounge went into that location. So it's located downtown, it has the nightclub allowance through the special use permit process. It's my understanding that they're not gonna operate as Divine did, but that it'll be similar to the use of what the chocolate bar was over at California in Arlington.
Yeah, no, my concern on that one was it's for cabaret, which would allow live entertainment, it says 24 hours. So technically, if we approve this, could you have bands playing at 4:00 in the morning in that location?
They have the special use permit in place for a nightclub for that type of activity. It's already in place. I, I don't believe that's their intent. I don't know if their, if their representative wants to address that, but I don't believe that's their intent on that's how they, how they will operate.
Let's get it on the record. Identify yourself for the record.
Brian Schuster, Lionel Sawyer, and Collins, on behalf of Chocolate Bar. Good afternoon. That's correct, it's not our intent to operate. I think our hours, I don't have the business license application in front of us, I'm here on another matter, but it's not our intent to have live entertainment at 5, 6:00 in the morning.
Is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I remember the Divine and we had issues with the Paladio residents and gathering outside. I'm just concerned about that 24-hour cabaret use, and I don't, I mean, if it's grandfathered in, it's grandfathered in, but.
The, the issues with the Divine were mostly occupancy? They were letting in too many people, more than the complex, so that's why there were people outside. I think a lot of it was the fire department shut them down a couple times, if I recall?
I, I think that's correct, but that, that was not my client, but that's my understanding as well. Also, I've just been informed that the hours, I couldn't remember exactly, but they're 9 to 3, 9:00 AM to 3:00 AM.
3:00 AM?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess my question was going to be that the current policy you have over on, gosh, Clay Street and, and California, is, is it the intent?
Arlington, yeah.
Arlington, okay. Is it the intent of moving, because you have entertainment, I think, on Friday and Saturday nights, and have the same policy over here?
I'm not sure that we wanted to eliminate necessarily to Friday and Saturday nights.
I did meet with the, with the business owner prior to their application, and they did say it would be, say it would be a similar operation as the previous location.
Ms. Frazek, you wanna give me a motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve all three. I mean, special use permits, so if they don't follow the conditions, then we get to revoke it, so.
I'll second that with a, with a brief comment that the chocolate bar has been a good neighbor on Clay Street, so I would expect that they would continue.
Okay, I have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam J. Seven. Mr. Chisel.
Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. Pursuant to our bond ordinance, I'm here to inform you that the sales tax revenues from the Cabela's Star Bond District are insufficient to meet the current debt service payments for the 2007A and 2007B sales tax increment bonds by approximately $273,000. To meet the July and August payments, a reduction of the reserve, bond reserves of $273,000 was needed to occur. This will leave approximately $1,200,000 in reserves for the bonds. Bond payments are still being made, it is just a reduction of bond reserves. I'd also like to note that this is not considered any type of default by the city or by any entity, it's just the way the Star Bonds operate, and this is, my purpose here is only to inform the city council in accordance with the bond ordinance.
Okay.
Staff recommends city council accept the report.
Okay, any questions or anything, Mr. Azic?
Not a question, more of a statement. I mean, one of the reasons we did this is Cabela's bought their own bonds, so they knew exactly what they were buying, and so I'm thankful for the report, but it doesn't harm us at all. They said to make this thing pencil out, we will buy the bonds ourselves, so.
Mr. Gusson?
I'm just gonna echo what Councilman Azic said, 'cause that was exactly the recollection that I had. They said, there's no obligation to the city, we're gonna own the bonds, and if it becomes a problem, we'll just, we'll just buy them and pay them off. So, I, I just think people need to understand that, that they own all those bonds and they're responsible for them.
They, they have assigned a portion of each of the bonds to Pinnacle Entertainment, but it was a private deal, so it is not considered a public.
Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, I was just on that same note. I mean, under no circumstances, even if they run out of reserves, there's no circumstances where we would ever be in default on these bonds because of the way it was set up.
That's right.
So this is all, I mean, if you look at how Star Bonds should work, I think this is really a model for how they should work. There's no obligation to the city, no general obligation from the city, and, and clearly, I mean, it's just that they're not able to make the payments to themselves is the issue, so.
All right. Motion to accept the report. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Update discussion, potential direction to staff regarding the public-private competition policy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Kevin Knutson from the City Manager's Office. The item before you is related to a policy that was put in place in April of 2000. There's a copy appended to the staff report. As we're moving forward with the managed competition program, this is what governs our behavior, and we wanted to bring a couple of suggested changes back to you today, plus get direction on one of the issues contained within the policy. The first item is that the competitive assessment that's described in Sections 1.6 and 2.3 restrains us from implementing identified process improvements before an award of contract. Staff would like to suggest that we remove that constraint to allow us to make those improvements immediately. We can still include them in the RFP, but it does two things for us. First of all, there's the opportunity cost of not making the improvements. We can implement them sooner and start saving money sooner. And number two, it gives us a chance to prove those concepts before we memorialize them in a contract. So that's one change that we would like to make. Another one in Section 1.7 is that it says that the city staff will, will put the proposal together. We'd like to propose that the department staff is the one that puts the proposal together with assistance from the Office of Management and Budget to take it off of the responsibility of the staff members who will be actually performing those tasks and make it a more collaborative project with other city staff. It's just a clarification of the language. I think that the original intent was for that, but the way it's written, it sounds like only the staff who would be making the bid could put the proposal together. And lastly, where we need a little bit of direction is in that same section, it requires us to either reassign displaced employees or provide incentives to employees who may go to work for a company that wins the bid instead of our employees. Both of those have a cost associated with them that in the current financial situation that we find ourselves may make it prohibitively expensive to actually go through the managed competition program. So we'd like to propose to you that you have a discussion about that issue to determine if you wanna make any changes to those requirements or leave them as they are. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Dorch?
Yeah, Kevin, real quick, just, I'm not sure I completely understand the competitive assessment. You're saying you can't make changes to improve our processes prior to going to the RFP?
That's the way staff has read this as we've looked through it. It looks like you go through a process of analyzing what exactly the, the service or product that you're providing is, and staff will identify improvements that they could make. And then it says-
Shouldn't we be doing that every day anyway?
Absolutely, sir. I, I agree with that, and we do that in other areas where we're not using managed competition. But once we've identified as something being in the managed competition program, we think this puts a restraint on our activity at that point.
So, so if we've, once we identify something that we might wanna go out for an RFP on, then we've got this restriction?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. But it's not, our everyday, I mean, we're always looking for ways to improve efficiencies.
Absolutely, sir, yes, yes.
Okay. I mean, it just didn't make sense when I read, I'm thinking, it just doesn't make any sense at all. And then on the, on the policy, what, what are you looking for on the policy regarding the preference given to affected employees?
Well, the way it reads right now is if we go out for bid and staff does not win the bid, so an outside firm is gonna take over that activity, any staff that would be affected by that change, we'd have to offer them another position in the city, or if they decided to go work for that firm, we'd have to offer them some sort of one-time incentive. Both of those are actual costs that would be added on to the cost of going out for that service.
The requirement that we offer them another position in the city, that's only if there's another position available, correct? Or not?
My understanding is that that is not the case, that we're supposed to find a way to keep them on no matter what. It's in Section 2.3.
So we would just, we would have to pull that.
Can I ask for clarification, though? Is that in the charter or is that a policy decision by this board?
That's a policy decision.
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, that's in your policy. That was a policy decision made by the council when it adopted this. Civil service rules would still apply. This is an additional policy.
Okay, that's all I have, Ms. Ray. Any other question? Mr. Klinger?
Just wanna point out that what the, the current policy states is it states where the competitive process results in the outside delivery of services previously delivered in-house, the city will provide displaced employees other employment opportunities with
Councilman Azic? Can you explain again to me who actually does the RFP?
Well, the RFP would be developed by the department and the Office of Management, Budget, and Finance working together, but the response to the RFP or the staff response to the bid would also be developed by the department staff, and then we're offering help from senior management analysts and budget analysts in the Office of Management and Budget.
Isn't that the same group that can also bid on it? Is there a conflict, a built-in conflict there by having that department do this evaluation? 'Cause we're hoping for them to also bid on it, and then we'll go ahead and write the RFP.
Right. If I understand you correctly, the concern is, is that the people who are developing the scope of services for the RFP would also be the same people who would then bid on it. There, there could be some conflict in that, and that's something that we could look at administratively of making sure that separate people are looking at it.
In changing this policy, why wouldn't we just sort of leave that up? 'Cause each one might be different. Do we have to have a policy for how that works or leave it up to the city manager to say, in this instance, you'll do this? I mean, why would we have to have a policy to see exactly who, who does those things? I would think that's sort of why we have a manager to let him do some managing.
And that's the change we're proposing, is that we remove that language so that the decision could be made.
I thought you were gonna make it so that they would be doing it.
No, we wanna, we wanna broaden it. Right now, it restricts it just to the people involved.
Okay, I'm with you then. That's the part I got confused about.
We wanna broaden it, but the, the point I would make is that those folks that are currently delivering that service, they have to be involved in the process, 'cause they're the experts in, in currently delivering that service. So whatever that service is, as we're putting together the scope of the RFP, it would be very difficult for others outside of that section to, to put together a scope. I mean, you really need the folks that are, that are doing that now to, to help develop that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with however you wanna think about doing it, but you could open it up to, you know, like lawn care, anybody who's a, who could say, here's how often you have to mow the lawn.
And it just depends on the service that you're looking at.
And I would love to leave that up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other, Councilman Heskey?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think you definitely have to have the employees that are doing the work involved, and I do like the change to bring in your department, Kevin, and the city manager to review the RFP to make sure that it's, it's not biased one way or another. But with respect to the incentives, why don't we just eliminate the section that says that we must hire the employee and put them in the organization or provide them an incentive if they go, as opposed to making one of the requirements in the RFP, asking the contractor if he's successful, will he hire those employees? And that would be one factor among others that we would look at in awarding it to the contractor, 'cause obviously he's gonna hire the employees, at least that employee gets the job, and that would be an important consideration before we made the award.
That's actually already included in the policy?
It is.
That it's part of the RFP process, yes, sir.
Correct. So it's just a matter of eliminating two man, the other two mandatory requirements, right?
That's what we're proposing that, that you discuss. We don't have a suggestion for you, but we want some direction on what you'd like to do with that.
Yeah, Pierre, I'm okay with, with changing that language. My concern on, I mean, I guess if, if we put it in the RFP that if they were gonna hire additional, that they would give consideration to any displaced employees, but what if they're not gonna hire any additional?
Yeah, I'm not saying they have to. I'd like to know if they are or not.
Okay.
So.
If I could interject, the language says requiring the selected contractor that creates new jobs or has existing vacancies to first consider displaced city workers for these positions.
I think that's fair.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Councilman Ross?
Yeah, I brought this up before when staff brought back the other two proposals, and I just wanna make sure as we go out that we're getting a true comparison of benefits and all those things. I think health insurance comes to mind, but what I wanna know, if, if it comes back and maybe they come back and it's a half million dollars less for someone else to provide the service and not having that in-house, I wanna know what that difference is. Are they, you know, paying their employees minimum wage? Are they not providing healthcare coverage? I, I just wanna know that true comparison when, when that bid comes in. And, and so I'm hoping that that's what we're doing here.
For the record, John Flans, for Director of Public Works. In the previous discussion, there was an initial policy that went to the board in, in like January of 2000. Then there was a process that went through staff revisions through the Financial Advisory Board. They actually took language out that had things in there regarding benefits and wages, and just required in the, in the current RFP and how it reads now, that the contractors had to meet all federal, state, and local regulations. And they, and they didn't, they went silent on the, on the amount of wages or, or benefits paid.
Well, I mean, that's, I, me personally, I wouldn't support this unless we're gonna have that true comparison. Because if we're gonna do that analysis, it should be a true analysis.
I think you can ask for the comparison in the RFP. I, the purpose of going out to bid is to find out if we're competitive. And if, if everyone else out there is doing something drastically different than what we're doing, that's probably why we're not competitive. And, but I think you can ask in the RFP if, if they're providing those benefits or not.
That, that's what I'm asking, is that I wanna know what is being provided.
We can, we can ask in the RFP, the, the one thing I would say is that one of the reasons that they may be more competitive is that their benefit structure is different.
It's, yeah, exactly. It's, yeah, exactly.
I think that's kind of what we're faced with right now at the RTC. I mean, that's what some of the claims are. And there was considerable amount of savings, but I don't know if it's true or not. But, the conversation is going back, well, the benefits aren't nearly as good. I don't know that they're totally obligated to do that, but they, but I don't know where that middle ground is, that the benefits have to be some comparison, or comparable, or a percentage of. I think that's only fair. I think there's some proprietary information that people won't want to give up about how they make a profit. But, I do support Councilman Sforza's comments about how we get there. I don't really know. But, I'm not necessarily saying prevailing wage, but certainly benefits. We should have some understanding of what that package is.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that it's a disqualifier. I just want to know what the issue is when we go out, and if we go out and do this.
I think that's fair. Councilman Azzie?
Well, I think that's what the issue is, is how many people would actually respond then? If you put too much, where they have to put proprietary information out, where they're also competing with each other, you know, X, Y, Z, and A, B, C, or S. Oh, that's what you're doing. If we make them give us that benefit information that they aren't going to give each other, they may not respond to the RFP. So, you have to be careful about how much detail we want, because we just may get not as many responses as we are looking for. I don't know if we get the responses, then we weigh out who we would give it to. Is that's who we would ask for the next one? You know, at the next level, is we ask for that information?
Or, I think that the compromise would be is to at least know if they have the benefit, not so much what it's costing them.
No, what is costing them?
Because more likely than not, as employees are looking at the same competitors, they're going to know whether you have health benefits, profit sharing. I mean, the other aspect is, is the private sector has to pay income tax, which the public sector does not. I mean, that's 34% right there, technically, to the bottom line. So, I mean, there's a variety of different factors that are going to make the private sector either competitive or not competitive. And I know that we considered this before, we did not take that into consideration.
Okay. Do you have enough information to move forward, or?
I think he wants a motion, I would assume.
We need to make a motion?
I'm happy to make it.
Okay, Mr. George?
Yeah, I'll move forward with the changes recommended by staff. And with the elimination, Kevin, you might have to help me here on the policy regarding providing...
1.7?
Yeah, it's section 1.7, page 409 in the existing policy.
Eliminate the policy that we would have to provide employment for any displaced, and no incentives. We would have to provide any incentives to the employer to pick them up.
Is there a second?
Second.
And, but there is, as part of the bid proposal, we'll know if that contractor's going to hire our displaced employees.
That is part of the current, and we can actually clarify that.
Yeah, I want to make sure that's in there.
And we'll bring the entire thing back with the changes for your approval.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move to K1, Boards and Commission Appointments, Access Advisory Committee.
That's me, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and...
Reappoint Kathy Price Toby?
Motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City of Arts, City of Reno Arts and Culture Commission.
They're having their interviews next week, Mr. Mayor, so we'll postpone that probably until September, I would assume. I mean, next Wednesday.
Are you going to reappoint those terms that want to be reappointed? Michelle?
I'll just wait and do them all at once.
Okay, all right. Financial Advisory Board, keep advertising?
Yes.
North Valleys Ward Four Neighborhood Advisory Board?
Yeah, I'll move to reappoint Ed Hawkins.
Second.
With motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Northwest Ward Five Neighborhood Advisory Board?
Reappoint Stephen Mountford.
With motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The Urban Forestry, we need to keep advertising for that, but also the terms of Chris Riddell and Jonathan Goodman are to expire, and both are eligible and interested in reappointment. And I will reappoint both of those. With motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. When Ward One, Jeff Hollingsworth, is up for reappointment, and I will reappoint him. With motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward Two?
Second.
With motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What about Cynthia Albrecht?
Second.
With motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward Two South?
Second.
With motion in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, we are on identification of future council items.
Anybody have anything on the agenda you want to put on next week?
I do want to put on the agenda. Doesn't have to be next week, but they, we talked earlier about, again, I don't have the correct wording, and John Flansberg was talking about that, about people that are annexed. And we're talking about the fees that we take a look at revising our ordinance. So, if you are annexed into the city, you pay the city fee, not the county fee. Depending on what you said, the point, the source point of service. Is that what it was?
Yeah, your point of service. For the record, John Flansberg. So, currently, the ordinance that was passed today is anyone who comes into, that is annexed into the city, will begin, they will continue to pay the county rate. But, you want to look at that those individuals who are already in the city that are being served by a different point of service?
I wanted to look at the options of closing that gap, because the people of City of Reno are financing those people. And I don't think it's fair. I think everybody should pay their own rate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could we have you, when you're putting those considerations together, because obviously, we're talking about primarily the southern part of my ward, look at new owners as opposed to existing?
We can bring that as an option. Okay?
Well, there's some, there may be more of yours, obviously. But, I know in the northwest, the area that Councilman Azzie used to have now, that I have up off Leroy there, that's all, that's an island, and there are people applying for annexation. And so, there are some, I think, scattered around.
Any others?
Mr. Sforza?
Mr. Mayor, I would like on the next agenda, the online checkbook for the City of Reno, and for a report from the city manager, how much that would take to do what the state did regarding our finances. And then, the second item is an issue of disclosure. And then, Councilman Azzie was going to bring that up. But, I would like to change all of our require, make a requirement for all of the applications that come through the City of Reno, that they have to list the lobbyists, the advertising agents, the, all the principals involved on any application that is being made that could potentially require a decision by this body. And I know Vegas has updated their model and actually put it in ordinance. But, right now, we have blank LLC who comes forward on an application, and we have no idea who those principals are. And I think this council, and I don't know if we can get some guidance on the Ethics Commission from that, but it'd be certainly helpful to have that come soon.
Okay. Any others? Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think you've already got this on the agenda for the subcommittee to look at, to make recommendations to the council regarding the new $2.00 tax.
The Oversight Committee for the $2.00 tax.
To establish an Oversight Committee on that?
Yeah.
Is that going to be on the agenda already?
Let's go, no, I didn't put it on, but go ahead and put that on.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to comment on Councilwoman Sforza's request on the online checkbook. That is something that we are currently working on. And so, what we'll bring back is just a timeline, and a status report, and an update on where we're at in that process.
Okay. Any other agenda item? Okay. Any liaison reports?
Mr. Mayor, it sort of covers a lot of issues, but I'm going to sort of start throwing this out now anyway. From RTC to Tamwa, to some of the other things about how, I think, for the past 12 years or so, we've all been working very well together as separate entities. We've had our spats, but I think that's coming to an end. I believe that what's happening at the Flood Committee, what's happening at RTC, what's happening at the Water Commission, the Canuckies putting off the merger talks, they don't show up to the Shared Services meetings. They're blocking us at Flood Control. They're blocking us at RTC. We had our subcommittee meeting. We recommended that the RTC start giving us money to do what the citizens wanted us to, to start the golf course out there. We've been blocked there. And I think we're going to have to start looking inward and setting our own example for helping our own citizens. Sparks and Washoe County have taken off their regional hats, in my opinion. If it doesn't help their particular entities, then they're saying no to everything. And they're basing everything, all their decisions based on just dollars. Not what's the right thing to do, but just dollars. And they're going to counting on the City of Reno to come bail them out in the future. And that's exactly what's going to happen, because we've done it in the past. I mean, with the fire consolidation, that's one issue where they haven't even talked about that at all. The water issue, which brings up the sewer rates and all that, about how the general fund in the county's been subsidizing the water rates for quite a while. Unless this gets brought out, I keep hearing little things about this is happening at RTC, and this is happening at Flood Control. But, overall, there's just a lack of communication, and a lack of talking about these issues. And I think it's all going away. The Flood Control meeting we had, we voted. Everything on the City of Reno downtown is pretty much off of that list from the Army Corps now. But, we're putting more money in for Sparks to do their projects. And those things are probably going to have to be looked at very closely the next few months.
I don't know about those other groups, Dave, but I can tell you, at Shared Services, the county does, they do show up.
Well, I heard that there's two meetings in a row that didn't show up. We were having these discussions.
Well, I think because some of them were at NACO, so I might be wrong, Sherman, but for the most part, they've been, Kitty and John Bretonnitz have been showing up and participating.
Were the two that, one meeting that no one, absolutely no one showed up for.
And then, one person.
And then, one for...
Well, quite frankly, those aren't the two we have problems with.
No. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, on that subject, though, I think potentially it may be a good idea for Flood Control to come back to this entire body. I mean, you guys all know the costs associated with that. You do have your two representatives, but, I mean, we had that proposal with the bridge earlier. And I'm just thinking that we're going to have to really look at this as far as, I mean, there's fees that are being asked for, and what realistically we can do. And we know that bridge has to be replaced. And everything's been taken off the table for Reno. I mean, everything. I mean, so, even going through that process, I don't see how it helps anybody with the local credit share, because the way it's happening now, it would be an uneven distribution. You'd have the City of Reno residents paying the majority of all the assessments and the fees, just like the sales tax now, but receiving the least amount of benefit from the overall project. We're not talking small assessments here. We're talking potentially some very large assessments. And I think maybe this whole body, Councilman Azzie, should be informed on the changes that have occurred over there.
Maybe in September, we could have them come in and give us a report on the flood project.
Well, that's an interesting point, Mr. Mayor. I should bring you up to date on there. You know, we formed this with the JPA in January. We formed the Flood Management Authority. It doesn't exist except for the six members. We have no executive director. We have no CFO. We have no legal staff. The chairman has postponed those meetings, so we don't, do not have an executive director right now. The people who are here today work for the old Water Authority. We're giving them direction, even though they don't work for us. We're asking them to spend money for us that I don't think we're allowed to do. I'm having some serious reservations about what this new Flood Management Authority's doing is even legal, because we have no executive director. The CFO, who was John Sherman, resigned abruptly. So, there's no CFO to handle the transition, which is why we hired him to do the transition. So, there really isn't, there's no staff, there's no anything for this Flood Management Authority right now.
But, I'm not sure that the other one even exists, because we said that once that one was formed, that the other one would become obsolete. So, now, that's, you know, maybe we made our attorneys...
We don't have an attorney. We don't have an executive director.
Why are we acting a little too quick on the JPA?
What's disturbing to me, because I didn't know it was at this level, having served on there for almost six years. And when, I think I remember when Councilman Sforza was the chairman of the Flood Committee, we actually had to go through the process of the cost basis analysis for downtown, whatever that's called. And because at that time, it wasn't, the Corps was not going to accept downtown. We got through that. While she was the chairman, we showed the benefit cost ratio, or whatever that was. And now, to hear we've gone full circle back there and taken that out, that's very disconcerting.
Well, we didn't take it out. The feds took it out.
Pardon me?
The feds took it out. We didn't.
Okay. Whoever took it out?
Whoever took it out is not right.
Yeah.
But, what I'm saying, we worked so hard, and I think the senator had proposed that it be looked at overall. And now, they've taken out that portion essentially, which comes, I think we've got to have that analysis, because it comes down to the majority of the protection was in the downtown for the Reno residents. So...
You know, I don't know what the long-term situation is going to be with the bridge and solving that. And I don't know if it's even repairable. I've heard it's not. But, Mr. Mayor, you floated some issues, and I have no pun intended about that, the floating word, but about dredging the channel. And who knows if we don't have money. Maybe it's, other than spending 25 million of the citizens' money on a new bridge, maybe the dredging and a repair of that bridge is something we're going to have to live with. I don't know. I'm open to all those suggestions. Thank you for bringing it up. I did not know that Reno was out of the picture.
Well, we'll have them, maybe in September sometime, we could have them come give us a report after y'all have had your next meeting or so.
And then, I guess I just want to hear from the members who are at RTC, what happened with the subcommittee's proposal?
That was, well, what actually transpired was I was about to make the motion to accept the 9.85 million. And the vice chair was running the meeting, and spoke first and said that the chairman, who was not at the meeting because he was on vacation, had asked to continue the decision on that for at least a month. And then, the vice chair mentioned that he was not going to be there, and so, they wanted to continue it to October. So, the question that I brought up was of one of the engineers at the RTC. Now, if we delay this to October, what does that do for our growing season? And he definitely said that it would delay the growing season, which throws the whole thing, to me, out of kilter. Now, I don't know, I was waiting to talk to Councilman Azzie, he has much more experience on that committee than I. But, I'm wondering if, in fact, we could do something in September that, just like we do, have the missing member be on the phone, because I know that the representative from the county has been instrumental and wants to be involved in the decision-making. And I don't know what his decision's going to be. But, I, right now, we lost the motion three to two to extend it to, to not extend it, to draw a vote that day. But, the three to two motion was to move the decision to October. I think October is too late. It really hurts what we're trying to do in the City of Reno if it goes to October.
And we need to at least get the money we need for design and start and all that stuff immediately.
Absolutely. And, you know, there was an option about 250,000. I talked to Mr. Mayor, who was sitting as an alternate, and said, they're not going to accept that. We either go the 9.85, or we're not going to get it. We never got to that vote. So, that's what happened.
Can we request a meeting with the RTC, a joint meeting with the Reno City Council and the RTC?
I don't know why not.
I mean, that way, we get all the issues out there, because as far as I'm concerned, they want to slam this road through, but then they don't want to help the people out there, and the golfers out there.
And one of the individuals mentioned, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on...
Let me just, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, we'd operate a nine-hole course. And I said, that's not what we told the people out there. They wanted 18-hole course through the entire process. So, that's why we said, we're not going to take anything less than what we're asking for with the Reno Subcommittee, I think Councilman Azzie had proposed. Because it was brought up about just what will exist with a nine-hole course. No, we're not. That's not, that was not our word.
And that's what I was going to say, is one of the members that wanted to postpone said, you're not going to build another nine-hole anyway. You're going to do something else. No, we promised the citizens that we would build where we'd have an 18-hole course, and that's what we were after. The survey they did came back and said that it's going to be five or six million just to build the nine holes.
They want to build a road. They're going to buy the property from us. That's all I have to say. Doesn't matter what we do with the money. That's our business.
Again, to me, I mean, the five to six million dollars, there's a golf course with two courses with 36 holes that's for sale in the City of Reno for a little more than $3 million. And we're talking about five to six million to build nine holes? I guess I need to see the justification, but that seems to be way out of line to me.
The number, that's the high end of the number.
It's the high end.
It was anywhere from about a million to four and a half million, depending on what you build. It's about, I think the range, it was a big range. I think it was 100,000 to 500,000 a hole, depending. So, I mean, it could be substantially less.
But, I mean, maybe they'd come forward.
But, the executive director told us just before the meeting last Friday that that's what they had, because Mr. Mayor asked, there was some chalkboard behind him, had a lot of numbers, and he asked what they meant. And he said, oh, we've been going through this and taking a look. And that was as recent as last Friday. They said that it was going to be between four and six million dollars for nine holes.
Because they also have to purchase the land.
Right. Yeah, I think that number's the number. Yeah, I think that number, the numbers we got were just for us to build it.
Right. But they're talking about the land. We have to buy it from the sewer, and we have to buy the other note and stuff like that. Anyway, it's going to be very interesting. But probably in September, we'll get a report with them. There was, one of them made a statement that, well, we're not buying the land, we're just offsetting your problems and things. And I said, no, you're buying the, and then they kept on, and I told them, well, I can't repeat what I told them.
Well, let's put the road through their jurisdiction then, Bob.
Then we told them that they needed to, they were buying Butler, they're buying ours. They're buying the university, they're buying ours. Not that, well, we're going to give you the road back when it's built. That's no big deal to us. So anyway, I will say that the chairman, after Mr. Azzi explained to a couple of people how the cow eats the cabbage, has called, asking me for a meeting, and I will work it in and have a meeting with them tomorrow. All right. Any more reports on conferences or professional meetings? Item L4, I want to thank everybody for kicking in on the special 9/11 event. The money that we've raised will pay for the flags and things that'll be hung from the balloons and everything else. It's going to be a beautiful occasion. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to be out of town, but I encourage everybody to be there. And since Mr. Guston's the vice mayor, they want you there about 4:55 in the morning, Mr. Guston. And I really appreciate your stepping in and doing that. And, but thanks all of you for doing it, taking it out of the special funds there and making this happen because I think it's going to be a great day and a great occasion. And thank you, Mr. Guston.
Your reachable life cell. Okay, that's good. Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hascheff, number five, L5.
Tracy Chase, this is a reallocation from one city fund to another, so there's no resolution. You just need a motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L6, Mr. Azzi.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to improve the coordination of staff, trying to, uh, support the establishment license and payment for all those individuals.
Have a motion, drive second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L7, Ms. Sfrazza.
This came up at our subcommittee meeting, and I've had a request from the residents out there to look at Maraloma, different traffic calming, but also what would happen potentially if Maraloma was blocked off. And so I think the only way you can really do that is similar to what we did on Wells Avenue. And I would like to see what effect that has by closing it off for a few days and see if people really want that or not.
Can you close it completely from Hidden Valley coming in?
Correct. So it would be a closure at the.
That's going to affect a lot of businesses and stuff, too, isn't it?
Where Hidden Valley Drive is, Mr. Mayor, to Maraloma, is close that off for a few days and see what happens. Because right now, I have a feeling you've got some people who want it closed off and you've got others who don't. And then the other part of the agenda item was for, to study roundabout there, which we identified at the subcommittee meeting, where those would be. Because there's a concern with truck traffic and all of the things associated with the southeast connector on Maraloma.
Because I think, yeah, and I think we should not allow trucks to exit onto Maraloma.
Well, we don't allow trucks on Maraloma now, Mr. Mayor. And they're there all the time. I mean, it's an enforcement issue. So I think the roundabout or speed humps, I would just would like it studied because this, if this connector goes through, there's going to be a serious impact on Maraloma.
Right.
And I think the residents have legitimate concerns over there.
The only thing I'm having a hard time with, but we can look at it next time, is shutting off Hidden Valley people from coming down there.
Well, I understand what your concern is. They would have the Pembroke exit, but really.
Is this when it's built or is it now? You want it now?
The reason why I want to do it now is because I, I think people think that they want this, but I think once it's done, that we're going to get the calls saying, we really don't want this. And that's what my concern is. The only way to do that, it's not, people, staff can come up and say, here's the models. But to have an actual, realistic, what would happen if this was closed off and there was no exit point off of Maraloma from the connector, what that would do.
Yeah. My concern's the same I brought up when you first brought this up, is that I'm not sure we would ever close that. I mean, because we don't know, I mean, what RTC's telling us is that to close that would have a major impact on the southeast connector and the traffic flow in the southeast connector. And would push traffic to McCarran instead of using the southeast connector. So if we're never intending to close that, I mean, maybe that's a discussion we need to have. But if our intent's not to close that, then why would we give them the model? And then they said, well, you did the model, now we want you to close it. But that's not part of the model with the southeast connector.
Because I thought that we get to determine, too, how that's done. I mean, also, you don't have the widening, you don't have the full impact of the widening of McCarran right now. I mean, if you just go over there and sit over there, what happens on Maraloma now with the truck traffic? And then adding that road there, there's going to be a serious impact over there. There's no question about it.
But the problem that the RTC brings up is that it drastically changes the traffic flow for the southeast connector if you close Maraloma. It has a major impact on the traffic flow, and it pushes people off of the southeast connector and back onto McCarran, and takes away some of what we're getting, some of the advantage we're getting on the southeast connector. At least that's what they said to us when we asked them that question.
My question for you, just because, is this regarding the southeast connector? Because right now, we're not building a southeast connector.
That's true. I mean, I guess we can wait.
So why would I work on that now until they come to terms with us on this property?
Or how we're doing.
Why would I even mess with it right now?
You're right. Right now, it's not happening. It's not.
So I don't mind doing that, but sending staff out to do that right now when we're not even sure it's going to happen, it seems to me like it could be.
That's true. Okay, I'll just, I'll just wait. I think that's a good point, until we get all the.
You have something, sir.
Until we see if there's even going to be, if this is even going to come to fruition.
Right. Yes.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. My only caution on actually closing off, even as an experiment, is we do require two access points. And just for public safety, I don't know that we'd want to actually block one of the accesses off to the Hidden Valley area.
Okay.
Okay. Item L8. I brought this up, and Barbara, would you come up and explain this? And Chief can help us and.
I wanted a visual here, is what I wanted. I wanted, should have brought in a motorcycle.
Good afternoon. For the record, Barbara DeCiano. A citizen contacted the mayor in regards to a discrepancy between the NRS statute as far as motorcycle handlebar height, motorcycle handlebar height goes, and the Reno Municipal Code. The Sparks Code and NRS mirror each other. The RMC is more restrictive, so they are asking that we look at our code and see if we can amend it to mirror the NRS. The height, motorcycle handlebar height for NRS just has to be to your shoulders, and RMC is 12 inches if you're sitting in a certain position, but it's more restrictive.
The chief can tell us more about it.
I did a good job.
Thank you, Barbara. Steve Pitts, for the record. And I might use Jack if I have to. Just for the record, our RMC 606040 was written in 1966. As Barbara had mentioned.
When did Easy Rider come out?
I was going to mention that. I was going to try to be as professional as possible. I should have known you'd come up with that, Mr. Azzi. Actually, it says that handlebars on motorcycles will not exceed 12 inches in height, measured from the original crown or point of attachment. And then the second piece of that is no person shall operate a motorcycle equipped with handlebars that are more than 15 inches in height above that portion of the seat occupied by that driver. And the NRS is basically what Barbara shared with you. And my recommendation, I've been working directly with the city attorney's office, is look at a revision. And then for street vibrations, obviously, if we need to cite, we'll use the NRS, but we'll have our officers, you know, look for more significant violations than a handlebar violation.
I think we ought to, unless you object, look into an ordinance that adopts the same thing the state has.
Absolutely, sir.
And during street vibes, look for more serious things.
That's right. Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. How about beards on certain people? Couldn't you bring that in? Never mind. I'll talk to you about that later.
I shaved, and we're gay.
You're ugly. No. Not you, Barbara. Adam Nine, L9, Ms. Adra.
Mr. Mayor, there's been very limited discussion on the topic of consolidation or regionalization of the dispatch services at the Shared Services Committee level. And that beard's giving you another go around, Mr. Mayor. There's, there appears to be, again, some discussion, serious discussion going on about it. And this council has never had an opportunity to, has never benefited from any discussion about it. And I, as one of your representatives on Shared Services, want you to hear the same information, at least an update from our staff, on what direction is being pursued so that I can represent your interests better at Shared Services. And again, this topic has never come to us, so I think it's important that you all get benefit before we're supposed to commit for you. So Chief, if you could kind of give us a summary, as you understand it, of what's going on, who's involved, what the ultimate, immediate ultimate and future intent is behind this.
Steve Pitts, for the record, and you're making reference to Shared Services. Our participation, we participate in every meeting. As far as law enforcement services go, we've really focused most recently on Communications, which is dispatch, and regionalizing that asset. Of course, the sheriff, I don't remember the exact date, he pulled out of dispatch probably within the last year. And we've been working directly with him. I've directed our staff to do whatever they can to try to make that work with whatever plan he comes up with, with a couple of conditions. One is, is that it's a valued service that we'll be able to provide to our community, and it will improve our service. And the second thing is, it's fiscally responsible. And I have shared my views on that specific issue and Shared Services with Mr. Klinger, and I think he agrees with that, that point of view, at least specifically with Communications. The other things that we've worked on in law enforcement are continued to regionalize certain assets in the community, like the regional gang unit, our street enforcement team, and our rope team. But we haven't looked at any general philosophical regionalization of police services.
Well, and that's kind of where my question is coming from, Chief, is we've seen the county pull out of SET and, you know, some of the gang activities that you just made reference to. Not recently, but they're still not participating in those very valuable projects, yet they want to participate in a regional approach to dispatch. What kind of confidence should we have that they're going to service the majority of the constituency, which are the city, the incorporated city residents, versus a secondary agenda for just improvement for the unincorporated citizens?
I'll give you my.
But I think it's important for us.
I think you turned it off with your.
Oh, I did. Excuse me. I think it's important for us, Zadra, in public safety, especially with the challenges we face right now, to work hard collectively to find solutions that will add value, as you're saying, to our constituencies and those that we serve. And if regionalizing communications is one of those, we'll work in that direction. But I'm just skeptical in the sense of, from a diagnostic perspective, everybody's got economic and budgetary problems. And I don't know if, I mean, I haven't seen a model, unless Mr. Klinger has, that fiscally says that combining dispatch in the direction that Sheriff Haley wants to go is going to be fiscally responsible. I know Steve Peach worked previously and probably reported to this council through Rick Vandenberg on some options for regionalizing communications. I haven't looked at those recently, but that's a recommendation that we made to the sheriff, I believe, two meetings ago, that he needed to take a look at that program or that model that Steve had recommended through Rick Vandenberg over a year ago, I believe, to this council.
It really hearkens back to the conversation we had just a half hour ago, not even. You know, the county's participation in RTC, in flood, in fire. We've just had a very recent, as well as some of the further ones out, like we also just talked about, gang and SET and whatnot, where they're just pulling back. So I'm wondering what the confidence level is that our citizens will get the service and the value that's, that we are responsible to provide to them. And then the secondary issue is, you know, we are talking about privatization. Is this an area that we should have that discussion as well?
On the issue of privatization, I've mentioned with Mr. Klinger and actually Kevin previously, that I would like to look at, maybe look at graffiti abatement. There's some legal issues that are attached to the way we do it now. We have certain access to certain information that's regulated by the federal government. We'd have to work through that. But I think maybe we could work with somebody as far as graffiti abatement goes, and we handle the enforcement end. They handle the abatement for us in the region. But from my perspective, ma'am, I'm a public servant, career public servant, and I want to give the council and the mayor the best advice to move forward with whatever asset that we can bring to the community as a whole, the region. And I just ask for your direction specifically on things that may be of interest to you with respect to public safety, more specifically, police.
So this is the opportunity for council to express to you, since you're in those negotiations, how do they feel about this concept?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Azzi.
My question, what's broken? I haven't heard anything to say that the current, I know they want to include more things like incline, but with what we provide up there with ours, have they said there's anything wrong that we could solve? I haven't heard that from anyone yet, that there's something wrong.
I haven't either, sir.
And the other part of this is when the sheriff says he wants to, I know we put this under data management before because there were, frankly, there were arguments between the police department and the fire department as to who's getting better service. And we said, we'll take it away from both of you, and we'll handle it this way. And I haven't heard of, I mean, the fire department had their own dispatchers that only dispatched fire at one time. They weren't cross-trained. So I don't know what the plan would be for this. But what I would ask the sheriff is if he's going to take it over, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but what's he going to charge us? That's the huge issue. Because if the sheriff runs it, it's a county-owned facility, which we all pay county taxes to. So unless they charge an infrastructure tax to the unincorporated residents to pay for their share of the services, why should the city of Reno and Sparks pay extra for their share of the services? And that's what happens all the time, is the city populations, we pay our city tax to pay the county for what our county tax should be paying for. We get double-dipped for it. So if he wants to take it on without costing us any more money, because we're all county residents, look at your bill, I'm fine with that. He can have it. But I'm sure what he wants to do is to say, now, the city of Reno, your portion is $5 million a year, above what I'm already paying the county to run this operation. If they also will break that out and say, the unincorporated residents, here's your share, your taxes go up to pay that, like they do with fire, I'm fine with that. That's okay. But unless they're also willing to impose that on the unincorporated residents to pay their share, they're still being subsidized by 75% of the people in Washoe County.
Mr. Azzi's correct, because that is also the argument that Sue has worked on with us specifically on forensic services. And don't quote me on this, I'm obviously at the diocese, but I think they wanted to say that roughly, we were going to owe about 1.2 million a year for forensic services, but they were taking the year of the Brianna Dennison case, and where we had several other significant events in community, and using that as a baseline to say that, you know, you're going to pay basically 1.2 million a year for forensic services. And we're still working through that. Sue has been the lead on that. Mr. Azzi's correct, though.
Yep. I'll give you my two cents worth, because he has come to Shared Services on several occasions, and, I mean, it's still a work in progress, and I think he understands and is sensitive to the fact that the end goal here is to provide better service, whatever that may be, for less money. So I don't know what that contribution, if any, is going to be, but they're still, they even looked at firms or companies that would privatize dispatch and might be better, but apparently there are not that many that are out there, so that may not be an option. But it's clearly a work in progress, and all the things that you said may be actually accomplished. I don't know.
Those are just my comments on moving forward.
Yep.
And that's exactly, I think that this, this board needs to express what their expectations would be, so that they can indeed be incorporated into the conversations before it comes back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any others? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Updates, and then, item M1, let's postpone that until next week. Update on, excuse me, what did you say, Mr. Guston? Huh? Yeah, we're going to that. All right. Update regarding grievance arbitrations, let's wait until next week on that also. We've gotten the written report.
Just like, I don't know if Renee's had to wait here all day, but maybe we could do the same thing with this one as we do with the fire overtime, Mr. Mayor, so we don't have to have staff. I don't know, Renee, if you're just here for that, but if we have any questions, then we can let Andrew know.
As long as we get the written report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, you have to have public comment before you adjourn.
I know that. These guys didn't, but that's okay. I'm not doing that. Anybody got any public comment? John, do you have any public comment? Okay. Brian, do you want to say anything? Okay, good. Thank you. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll call a joint meeting of the Reno City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. Call the robe, please.
Ashev.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Sforza.
George.
Azzie.
Here.
Having no public comment, cards, I'll close that. Approval of the agenda? Have motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Approval of the minutes of June 22nd? Have motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose. Item B1 was pulled. Item C, identification of future agenda items? Here, none. I'll go to public comment again. No public comment?
Move to adjourn.
Have motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. That's the, by the way, the...